July 11th, this regular Board of Selectment meeting, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. It's 6:00, oh, Mike, it's almost, it's not even 6:00 on my laptop.
6:00.
Okay, 6:00, 6 o'clock. Hi, Heather, it's Chris. Okay, our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I see. I know Joan's here for public audience, so let's kick off public audience. Yes, I just said Joan, come on up, 5 minutes. You want to time it, or? I do want to just make a couple reminders before we do public audience. Lisa Hevner did this at one of the finance. We have an anti-harassment policy, so we try not to say anything that's harassing to anybody, staff, or board, or fellow citizens. Robert's Rules of Order have something on decorum, and we want to stay away from personal attacks of people. So now we can start our public audience.
Joan Coe, 26 Wickham Drive. On August 9, 2022, there'll be Democratic Party primary. Eric Wellman will be running against Melissa Osborne, the Simsbury State Representative. This position became open when John Hampton was not running for reelection. Eric Wellman is a woke candidate with positions that are left of socialist Bernie Sanders as Simsbury Representative. He will have the ability to vote for legislation that will defund the police, promote the Critical Race Theory, CRT, and add sex education in elementary curriculum. Eric Willman will be a tax and spend legislator that will increase inflation, make Connecticut non-competitive, and increase taxes. John Hampton was a moderate Democrat. Eric Wellman is no John Hampton. Recently, there have been allegations by innuendo and character assassination by association with what appears to be coming from the Eric Wellman campaign against his opponent, Melissa Osborne. Elections should be won or lost on the character of the candidate and their positions on policies that affect the residents of Simsbury. We should not vote for a Machiavellian candidate that believes by attacking an opponent with a scorched-earth policy, with the end justifying the means to gain a position as state representative is justified. As Simsbury's first electman, the member of the Board of Selectmen, did Eric Wellman use his position to catapult into another political office? Or the residents of Simsbury used a pawn to enhance his ability to climb the political ladder? Not only is Eric Wellman a woke candidate, he is a self-serving opportunist that will stop at nothing to get elected.
Joan, are these facts?
Eric Wellman does not have the values of Simsbury's residents and should not be elected as Simsbury State Representative. In August 9, 2022, the Democratic Party primary will determine who will represent Simsbury as Democratic Party candidate in November 8, 2022 election. Melissa Osborne should be the chosen candidate. Presently, the Board of Selectmen is in the process of evaluating Town Manager Maria Capriola's job performance. Recently, Town Manager Maria Capriola chose candidates for the position of Director of Community Planning and Development, Assistant Town Planner. These vacancies were open for many months, while the only employees in the department were the land use specialist, co-compliance officer, and land use building clerk, none with credentials to support the land use boards and commissions. After a thorough review for Director of Community Planning and Development, Town Manager Maria Capriola chose a candidate that was not the first choice of her candidate review committee. George McGregor, Director of Community Planning and Development, appears to be overwhelmed with the position and did not have time to answer phone calls from developers and residents. Previous employees in this position were able to satisfy the public and give professional support to all boards and commissions. The opening for Assistant Town Planner was open for several months. A candidate for this position was a credentialed employee, interviewed by a panel and selection, forwarded to Town Manager Maria Capriola for the final decision. Town Manager Maria Capriola did not send a letter to the candidate that she was not selected, but told the town planner to address the issue. This is a failure of management. The person selected for the position as Assistant Town Planner has a checkered past with several positions that lasted only a year. Town Manager Maria Capriola's track record of appointments are a failure, as noted with Janelle Mellon, co-compliance officer, who failed to perform her duties and bolted from the position without any notification to staff. The Director of Community and Planning and Development, Jamie Rabbit, resigned under a cloud of misconduct. Robin Newton, Assistant Town Planner, had several grievances with Downtown Manager Maria Capriola and finally resigned with a nondisclosure agreement with the town that was forwarded to the press and published. There should be a full investigation by the Board of Selectmen to find out who released the document. The findings should be made public and made forward to the press. Town Manager Maria Capriola has abused the power by creating an MOU, surrender of understanding, that is non-binding, to take over the management of the Police Department, reduce the power of the state-regulated police commissions. Police Commissioner Jim Faly immediately resigned, stating the rule of law was violated. Recently, Senator Dick Blumenthal spoke in front of Town Hall. He was reminded, when he was Attorney General, he was accountable under the Charities Division to oversee the town's compliance, that Eno Farms affordable housing was regulated under the Eno Trust for the Poor and was non-compliant. The town records reflect that the housing must be for low and very low-income residents. The town is now working to bring the complex into compliance, and all my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joan. I see Dr. Renaldi's here. You're here for a public audience?
Yeah. Good evening. The last time I was here was 2018.
Can you just state your name and your address?
Oh, Mike Renaldi, Pinnacle Mountain Road.
Thank you.
The last time I was here was 2018, and I asked this board to do something, and obviously they didn't do it. And I thought I'd make a statement about that. And I had 3 comments. The first comment is about quality of life situation in Simsbury. Second is a fairness problem in Simsbury. Third is a diversity, equity, inclusivity, and affordability problem in Simsbury. These 3 comments would take many more minutes than 5 minutes to go over, but let me go over my statement. The statement goes way back into 2018, when I spoke before the Board of Finance. At that time, there was a project of renovating the Henry James Middle School. At that time, the Board of Finance gave the Board of Education $200,000 to do a facilities master plan reconfiguration study by Tecton Architects. Every 10 years, the Board of Education does one of these studies, and the previous ones were the NASDAQ and Pravda studies in 2012. If you read those studies, they're right on. However, the Board of Education doesn't read them, I don't think. Well, let's get back to this Henry James Middle School project. The Board of Education decided to go ahead with that project before the $200,000 master plan was completed. 6 months later, the master plan came back, and what do you think it said? Put the 6th grade in the middle school. Now, I understand on the 6-year plan, going forward, there's a two-wing project for the Henry James Middle School to put 6th grade in there, which is going to be over $30 million. That's a huge mistake. And we keep on making mistakes, because we have a Board of Education that are fairly intelligent people, but they're not very knowledgeable. They make big mistakes which cost the town taxpayers tons of money. When I first moved here 50 years ago, Simsbury ranked 129 out of 169 towns in per pupil cost, and we had one of the highest-ranked school systems in the state. It was actually in DRGA, which is Fairfield County. Not all the school systems in Fairfield County are in DGRA. We're in DGGRB today. But our per pupil costs have gone to 93 out of 169 towns. It has nothing to do with the quality of education. It has to do with the cost of education, making bad mistakes. So, my feeling is that we should have a new Charter Revision Commission in how we form the Board of Education. Board of Education is not an elected body. It's appointed by the 2 town committees. They select 2 Republicans, 2 Democrats every 2 years, and they say, "There are 4 seats for election, but you're only allowed to vote for 2." You have 2 votes for 4 seats. An independent, if tried to run for that board, can't get elected. They limit the amount of votes. If you were in Georgia, it would be unconstitutional. This statute for which it is under, it's called Canadian Statute CGS 9167A. This statute is obviously unconstitutional. It limits your vote. And when you have a limited vote, you cannot elect your leaders, and the Board of Education is not really elected. The people there are institutionalized. They're like the Supreme Court to some extent. Not elected, appointed, stay there forever until they move out of town or quit. I understand we have somebody who's moving out of town and is going to be quitting. But if we don't change the way the Board of Education is elected, Simsbury is going to become an unaffordable town. We're approaching that right now. When you get your tax bills, you'll see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve, are you here for public audience?
Sure.
Okay, come on up. You have 5 minutes, Steve.
3 minutes.
Okay, great. Take it.
For the record, Steve Mitchell, 384 Hot Meadow Street. It's not my residence, but it's where I spend most of my day. Dealership. But the reason why I'm here tonight, to tell you and to thank everybody, Shan and Josh made it from Key West to Canada through Simsbury, and a number of you helped put that together. And at the end of the, he was the first person in the world to run from Key West to Canada, and at the end of his run, he got down on his knee, proposed to his girlfriend, and they are now engaged to get married. But, so, on the letter note. The greenway, and the reason why I'm here tonight through Simsbury, is one of our best assets in the town. We all know that. What is bothersome to me is the way, or the lack of maintenance on a regular basis. I was just behind the dealership. That kind of was my emphasis coming up here. And I don't know what the solution is, but it's not really, in the, and I'm saying this in the light of public interest and public safety, to have weeds and vines growing over the trail is not safe. It's full of ticks. And it's just, there does not seem to be a regular maintenance of one of our biggest assets in town, and that's bothersome to me. And I don't know if you all know that. We all look at Iron Horse Boulevard, and we think, "Oh, the trail's beautiful." But, you know, you've got to take into account from Ensign Bickford down to Wheaton, through Wheaton. It just, it just seems like it's the redheaded stepchild. And, and so I, you know, just-
Not that there's anything wrong with redheads.
No, I was a redhead.
I just had to say that.
But, so that's my only concern, you know, that's my main concern and the reason why I'm here tonight, is just what I see, what I observe, and what people tell me, and I'm aware of some accidents. Line of sight, particularly coming from Ensign Bickford down across that really sharp turn, you've all been on it, I know that. It's super important to have regular maintenance.
Well, we have our guys here listening to this. So we have Tom T. and Tom Roy here listening, so-
Four crew members today working in the southern part of town.
Wait.
So, I had a stepson, and when he cut my lawn, I said to him afterwards, and I'll keep my language clean, I showed him, I said, "This is what you just cut." And in what yours just said to me, "I don't care, I don't care, I don't care." That was, and I'm sorry to say that, but just-
We were aware that it needed to be cut. We got the 4 guys out there, working today and yesterday, I believe, to try to bring that back.
Is there a regular maintenance schedule?
You're over your 3 minutes. No, kidding. But yeah, if you want to answer that, you, okay. Okay, thanks.
Can I bring, raise a question to Tom? Not to open this up into public discussion, but we talked about the paving behind canes. That section there was super problematic and dangerous with roots. And did we, was that something that came up as part of a capital expenditure that we had to, Sean, this is like 5 years ago, 4 years ago?
Yeah, those were-
Was it specifically named out?
That was a capital program. There was actually significant money put into the trails in terms of resurfacing. And it is kind of funny, Tom, somebody named Tom takes care of the trail.
Yeah. The reason why, again, that opens up for discussion.
Public Works does the paving. Parks and Recreation does vegetation.
Okay, and so when, when, when something of that scale is identified as being needed, that mowing and paving are 2 separate projects in cost. But we, so each time we pave, we come for appropriations from, out of, it's a budget expenditure. It's not something that is somewhat, to a certain extent, pre-funded, that we have a maintenance ongoing for the trail? That's just, so-
Right, so the major capital expenditures, such as, you know, tree work along the trail, paving, fencing, things of that nature, we've done, at least, I think since we've been together, I want to say 3 allocations, all in excess of 6 figures, to essentially fund that sort of work. So it typically would show up in either ICNR account or a capital account.
Yeah, so leading with, so we are, not asking for further dialogue and discussion, but we are, we are doing things, but sometimes it takes illumination.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Chris, for bringing that up. Thanks for answering. Thanks for the data. Okay, so I'm going to move on to presentations. We have a very large agenda tonight, so. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for Simsbury Farms' 50th anniversary. Tom, do you want to say anything? I'm trying to find the agenda item here. So, so, Simsbury Farms, I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, but they were celebrating the anniversary with multiple events. Some of us remember it as Orkill Farms, or that it was an apple orchard way back in the old days. I don't know if I ever saw Orkill Farms. Pardon me? I lived in Bloomfield, so I didn't come over the mountain, I guess.
Near the gate up.
For the Bloomfield people, thank you. There's been a lot of renovations over the year. I just want to say that, you know, spent a lot of time in the old hockey rink before the roof was there, spent a lot of time in that wading pool with kids, as we probably all have, and played golf in the nine-haulers way back in the 90s, and I'm playing again now, no better than I was then. So anyway, I'd like to move effective, do I read the, I always ask this, read the proclamation first and then ask for approval. Okay, so I'm going to read the proclamation. And this was presented, an ask of the Friends of the Farms, and I'm in conjunction with Tom in the Parks and Rec Department. Whereas on June 10, 1972, 50 years ago, the town of Simsbury held an official dedication and open house, and I assume a ribbon-cutting, for Simsbury Farms, which began the first chapter of Simsbury's full recreation complex as visioned by town leaders. And whereas the decision to purchase the 235 acres known as Orkill Farms and Apple Orchard by a 600-to-1 vote at a town meeting was based on the vision presented for a complete recreation facility to meet the total needs of the community, including an 18-hole golf course, tennis courts, swimming pools, hiking trails, and ice rink and platform tennis courts. And whereas the year 2002 marks the 50th anniversary of the opening of the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex, at which we recognized that this vision had come to pass. With the amazing facility we have all grown to love as both adults and children, that our families grew up loving, and that our children's families will get to enjoy for years to come. And whereas residents and visitors, both young and old, continue to play and learn, learn how to play golf, hockey, tennis, paddle tennis, basketball, and pickleball, along with swimming and diving in the multiple pools. And whereas the Simsbury Farms Rec Complex is a source of pride for all Simsbury residents, where we've spent many hours with our family members, friends, and neighbors of all ages, enjoying the endless recreational activities available to us. And whereas we thank all the employees and volunteers who have made Simsbury Farms what it is today, and to all those who are playing in a golf league, taking swim lessons, joining a tennis clinic, pushing swings at the placecape, watching an early morning hockey game, or just taking a walk and enjoying this spectacular view. And whereas a series of events called 50 for 50 will be held throughout 2002 to commemorate this milestone. Family Day, the Simsbury Farms Open, movie nights, the pickleball tournament, and a spectacular grand finale concert and fireworks show, to name a few, that will provide many opportunities for our community to engage in recreation activities. And now therefore I, Wendy McStudis, First Electman of the Town of Simsbury, do hereby proclaim in 2022 the 50th anniversary celebration of Simsbury Farms, and request and encourage everyone in our community to support and enjoy the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex, the 50 for 50 events, and to wholeheartedly share this important milestone with their friends, family, neighbors, and peers. And then, signed it. So, I'd like to move effective June 11, 2022, to issue a proclamation, which I just read, celebrating and honoring the 50th anniversary of the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex.
So moved.
Chris, move that.
I'll second.
Any. Oh.
You can have it.
Okay, Eric, second that. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we all lived it, and so it's just really dear to our heart. A little proclamation here for you. Okay, thanks, Tom. So next up, we have Patrick here from Community, the Simsbury Community Media, to do a presentation on the upcoming renovations. We try to keep our presentations to 15 minutes.
We'll try my best.
We have 3, we do in 5 minutes.
Okay, we change the rules on the fly as we go.
So, hello, everybody. If we haven't met before, my name is Patrick Fallon. I'm the Station Manager for Simsbury Community Media, formerly SCTV. We recently went through a name change. I'm going to be talking about some of the renovations that we have planned to occur over the summer. Hopefully, we'll get through all of them. There's a bit. Continue to the next slide, please. So, I started this out by phasing this out into 5 different steps for us in order to complete. And really, the first goal that I had in place was to really clean house and really start separating our equipment from the newer digital equipment to some of the legacy equipment we have. Some of the legacy equipment that we may have, like DVD players, coax cable, things like that, things that are going to be used so much. So we've actually gone ahead and sorted a lot of the different technology that we have and cleaned out the entire offices. So luckily, we have one of Simsbury's best and brightest recent high school graduate as an intern, Cole Perrello. He's with us until the end of August, until he goes to film school, and he's been painstakingly helping me go through a lot of our equipment. As part of our clean house, some of the things that, you know, I'm sure you guys have been down there, it's cluttered, to be generous, right, with a lot of the storage that we have. Some of the equipment down there, like, we had so many desks, I figured that we could get rid of them. In the closet, we had these old cubicle desks that were used, this is actually a cool fact, they were used for reel-to-reel editing back when the facility used to accommodate that. So, you know, they were privacy booths. You go in there and you would do reel-to-reel editing. Obviously, we don't do that anymore. Everything's just done on one computer, pretty much. So a lot of those pieces of equipment were actually donated to Simsbury Social Services, since they're right next door. And I'd love to take credit for that idea, but that was Mr. Matt Hopkins. He said, "If we're going to get rid of this, why don't we get it over to Social Services?" And that's what we ended up doing. So, I'm proud to say that those old ratty plants that were held together with zip ties are officially gone. We're working on getting a new set to be put in there so we won't have to have any different plants, you know, held together with zip ties. I was just not a fan of those. Currently, we're in Phase 2 right now. We actually just had our abatement completed in the landing of the facility. So right when you walked through the door, those asbestos tiles were actually cracked and chipping and coming up. Obviously, you know, we don't want to be a hazard to anybody's health in the community, or myself. So Public Works went ahead and had an abatement done, which was, they did a pretty good job, right? So that's all taken care of. Public Works also recently came in and got rid of all the cove molding around the base of the floors, because we're going to be sanding down all the walls. Well, a contractor will be sanding down all the walls and painting them, and I have some, our floor plan in a moment will go over that. And I'll show you the color swatches for what we're picking and where it's going to be going. But there's a lot of, you know, you can see bits and pieces throughout time where it was just, "Put paint here and it doesn't match up." We're going to have a nice, uniform, new look, quite literally a new coat of paint. As part of the construction, some of the things that are going to be happening is we have these old grates in the stairs. Those are going to be going away. We're going to be conjoining 2 of the closets. So we have, when you walk in, you probably recognize the 3 doors on your right-hand side, which, those were the private editing booths. So it makes more sense to me to have 1 larger storage space and 1 smaller, you know, things that go out commonly and things that stay in-house more frequently. So we're going to actually be conjoining 2 of the closets, and it's actually going to have an access store to the studio. So a lot of the stuff that we're going to be storing in the studio will be, you know, don't have to go all the way around. We're going to have some galvanized pipe hung above some, on both sides of the studio. So we have the green screen side, and we also have the modular set side. And we're going to have some new pipes installed to hang some more lighting. We're going to have a new floor installed. Our drop ceiling's going to be modified. That's something I'm looking forward to. That drop ceiling is, just needs to be touched up. Phase 3 is something that's going to be pushed back a little bit, and I'll touch base on that in a second. But we've actually started Phase 4 already, which is PEGPISA. For those who are unfamiliar, that's the state's grant for public education and government technology investment accounts. So I applied, me, I can't take all the credit, me and Mr. Mark Orenstein applied earlier this year, and I'm very proud to say we got about $37,000 for a technology grant. So this only can be spent on different technology items. So we've actually started receiving some of those items coming in. One of the things I'm very proud of is our field productions will now be recorded in 4K. So I'm trying to phase the studio to be 4K. The field productions are currently 4K, which I'm very happy about. And one of the projects we're actually working on tomorrow is we actually have a new server that we're going to be installing. Quite a substantial upgrade for us. We're going from a 12-terabyte server, so, you know, a rather okay-sized server, to a 64-terabyte server, so over 6 times the storage. So that's really exciting. A lot of the networking is going to end up being reinstalled and properly sheathed, so, you know, it's not as obvious, you know, dangling wires here and there. I don't like looking at that. So, and the final phase of all this is going to eventually be our public rollout, which we will have a ribbon-cutting for. Signage will be created for it. And we're aiming for some time, hopefully, optimistically, in September. If things keep going the way they are, September's looking like the timeframe. If not, the latest is probably going to be October. So some of the notable achievements, if you could go forward, please. One more time, I duplicate that slide. We successfully had the stage removed. So this is something that me and the treasurer have done. The whole purpose of the stage in the past was actually to cover the big old snake of wires that was actually on the other end of it. And we're completely wireless in the studio now, especially with the PEGPISA grant that we just have. We can have everybody on stage completely wirelessly mic'd up with lavaliers. No need to have a stage that's going to be, you know, covering up any of the wires anymore. And plus, you know, we're going to have the new floor in there, which is going to be this nice matted black, non-reflective flooring, the same thing that you probably see in a professional studio. You know, you know, any wide shots that we're going to have, it's going to be really nice to have those. And you can actually see the drywall back there that was patched up that took forever to do. I counted them, there was 37 holes that needed, that needed to be filled. There was a few of them. Next slide, please. This is some pictures of the landing abatement. You can see where they have the tiles ripped up and taken out. This is going to be floored over. We actually went with the same rubberized mat that you'll see in most of the town buildings, which, you know, it's going to be a nice, uniform look, trip-proof, going to be extra safe compared to what we have, which is always good. Next slide, please. And this has been the subject of some debate, but these sprinklers are going to be relocated. So currently, we have these horizontally-mounted sprinklers, and eventually, they will be relocated to be overhead sprinklers. And once we get that completed, then we're, that's going to, kind of the stepping stone in order to get our set in there. So we're actually, the set's custom fabricated for the needs that we have, Matt. And the last, or actually, I've got a couple more slides for you here. I'm sorry. The next is where we have everything stored right now. If you could, please.
You broke it, Tom.
So this is actually a-
I believe in you.
Yeah, there you go.
The 4K crashed the server.
So, this is actually where we have everything stored right now, so one of the reasons why we can't be doing studio productions is, the general plan here is, when we go to floor inside the facility here, these items will be temporary, it shouldn't take them more than a day to do this area, but we're going to move it temporarily into the senior center and then pull it right back out, so it's not even in there for a full length, you know, a full day. It's just to get the floor in there, and then we can start setting up everything again. And you can see that we have the wall painted green, that's going to be our green screen side, and then the other side's going to be where the set's going to go. If you can pull up the next, please. So, this is our new floor plan that I've gone through and updated for us, and on the bottom left, that's actually the entrance to the facility. You can see, to give you an idea, where there used to be three doors there, you can see that two of those closets have actually been, or will be conjoined. So, the hallway that you walk in, the offices, and the server room, kind of the outer ring there, are all going to have the same color, and then actually, inside the studio, other than the green, the green wall, the green screen side, we're going to have the ceilings and the walls painted in this nice, uniform gray, and then we're actually going to have a, the side by the server painted in, I love the color, it's called Little Black Dress. It's a nice matte black, and it'll actually help us if we, if any of the nonprofits in town need to do any sort of headshots or anything like that, it's just kind of another service that we can help the community with. So, I'm really excited to, once it hits this phase, I'm going to be really happy. And last but not least, is some screenshots of just what the set looks like, just to give you guys some ideas. So, this is the company called Uniset, they're the vendor we're working with. Each one of these panels are completely removable, so the graphics can all be changed, like the stony knees on the bottom can all just be pulled out, the graphics on the background can be pulled out. So, the idea is that we can build upon it over time, you know, so as time goes on, our inventory with this will grow, and it's just kind of another cool facet, if you're producing a program locally, is, you know, what do you want your set to look like? You want to, you want to design your own set? You can do that over at SEM. Next slide, please. This is kind of a good representation of what it actually looks like. It's actually negative space, so it's like a wall frame, almost, and then these graphics are just magnetically mounted, straight to it, so you get this, this nice look, and they're going to be custom, they're going to get the height for us, because obviously, we have limited height with the ceilings, they're going to get them to a certain height for us. And next slide, please.
Patrick, can I, so just for my frame of reference, you know, when you walk in today, I'm looking at the diagram, right? The green areas where we do our campaign videos on that side, right? Yeah, the far side, and the set is on the other side, is that going to be, okay.
Yeah, so, actually, maybe we'll...
It's always been like filled with junk when I, right, so now we're in your real set.
So, this is where the stage previously was, up here, and this is usually where the campaign videos. If you remember, we had the fabric before, right, and I didn't like that, so it's gone. So, one of the things we're actually doing on this end, I don't want to get too technical with like kind of explaining the ins and outs of how you make something look good on camera, but once we have the overhead lighting installed, the keying out the background is going to look really nice. I'm actually, part of my PEGPISHA grant is having a dedicated 4K camera for the green screen, because one of the things that I've, when I came in, it wasn't, you know, we could do better, and I've gotten to push the equipment to where we, you know, the best look that we can have for what we have right now, but there's some aspects of, for example, like you get like a lot of pixelation around fringing of hair, and some green bouncing off people's heads sometimes, I'm looking to eliminate that and make it as smooth as possible. I think everybody will be really, really happy with the results that I end up delivering with the green screen image especially. We have a really nice camera specifically designed, well, it's not designed, specifically for that end, so we're going to have, walk over here, and I probably got my workout in today going up and down the stairs. We're going to have one camera facing this end that's going to be our green screen camera, and then the four cameras that you're used to seeing are going to be on this end here, facing the stage in this, or not the stage, I'm sorry, the set. The set is going to be kind of like a, like a small, like a horseshoe shape. I'm sorry, Dave, I know you're up there recording, I'm so sorry. It's going to be like a horseshoe shape like this. So, if you remember, like if you watch some of our productions, you can always see like that dray in the background, like a curtain. I'm looking to eliminate that completely, so you just see set. And the idea is, if that, you have the set that is kind of like a U shape, you end up getting this depth behind it when you end up looking at the image. You know, if you have something that's flat, you don't really get any depth to the image you're looking at.
In one of the pictures I was scrolling through, you still have those old lights.
Oh, yeah.
So, which produces significant, I mean, everybody hates...
The old fluorescent ones, the box ones.
So, you, I mean, that room does get warm, it does get warm. So, is that something that's also being part of the redesign of the set, is less heat-producing lighting, is more modern like we all use now?
So, it's interesting you bring that up, because as part of my PEGPISHA grant, so there's variance in pricing, right, from the point of time, I put in the grant in January until now, and we're left with a variance of around $1,000, and what was decided on was at the file motion with the state, of course, to reallocate that money, but it's going to be reallocated to the lights. So, I'm looking to completely replace those old fluorescent box lights. Ideally, I'd like something controlled over Ethernet, but apparently, those don't exist. It sounds like something you could find, right, but I haven't been able to find them through B&amp;H or anything like that. But that's a very good question, and AC is one of the things that me and Tom have talked about in the past, too.
Oopsie, my series thinking that you're talking to them.
Does anybody else have any other questions about our progress or the long-term goals that we have set out, or?
Oh, but I see, I see the president of Simsbury Media TV is on up there.
Is that Ms. Mary Glassman?
She wants to...
Hey, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Loud and clear.
Oh, good. Do I have a minute to just comment?
If there's anything you'd like to add.
Yeah, just, I think, Pat, thanks for the board of selectmen, thank you for selecting the next two, for putting us on the agenda tonight. Patrick did a great job.
Oops, oh, there's the, there's the...
You broke it, Wendy.
All the status to date, and I just wanted to hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're having phone issues, I think, but go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the board, just wanted to really thank the town, from the first selectman to the board of selectmen, to the town manager, and Tom Roy and his team, for really working with us to expedite this project. It's going to be a great service to the community, and we're really excited about it, and I know it was a little difficult, issues came up, and again, thanks to Tom and his team for working with us. And we can't wait to have you all there to cut the ribbon and invite the public in to see all the services we're going to offer. So, I just wanted to add my thanks to all of you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mary. Any other questions?
No, I was going to say, we're all looking forward to next November, October, if we get to do more campaign videos in next year.
Worst-case scenario, in case we get pushed back, the green screen will be operational by August for campaigns.
It's okay, we're not up to...
We're talking about next year.
We have the...
Only one of us has that problem this year.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be up and running, no worries there. Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, so next up, we have, we have George from Zoning, or our town planning, town planner, to talk about the cannabis activities that have been going on in the zoning.
Yes, so I was asked to...
Somebody we should be concerned with.
Yes, we're having severe cannabis activities. Maybe it sounds like I'm having them right now, actually. Over to George.
So, good evening. I've been asked to give you just a very, very brief update on the status of the cannabis issue, how it relates to zoning and kind of where we are with the zoning commission's work on it, so next slide. So, I know everybody knows this, but maybe just for public benefit, just remember how this started. Public Act 21, I became effective on July 1, and that legalized cannabis, or adult-use cannabis, in the state of Connecticut, so it approved. Cultivation, sale, transport, distribution, the whole, the whole ball of wax associated with adult-use cannabis. And for the, on the land use side, there were some conditions, most notably, that there was a density cap for retail, particularly for retail, and it capped at one retail outlet every, for every 25,000 people in the town. So, that essentially meant that the town of Simsbury would have one as a maximum, if the commission ultimately allowed them as part of the zoning ordinance amendment. And the language of the legislation also said that, in the absence of local regulation, meaning if we didn't do anything locally, that those uses would be treated as other similar uses. So, retail cannabis would be treated like other retail cannabis, in terms of how we treat them in the zoning ordinance. And I think you know this, of course, the town of Simsbury and the zoning commission adopted a year-long moratorium, effective November 8 through November 8, 2022, and the point of that was to establish a time period to work on potential regulations and a regulatory approach. Probably the most important update relative to cannabis, particularly at the state level, is that just last month, a little over six weeks ago, the governor signed updated legislation that removed density caps. So, there are no longer density caps on a per capita basis. Next slide. Just as a reminder, of course, Simsbury and most Connecticut towns have a history with at least medical marijuana, so we updated our zoning ordinance in 2013 to allow medical marijuana, both from a retail and from a production perspective, and we had a cap on, on the dispensary side, to medical dispensaries. And we allowed them by special permit review, which, of course, if you know, special permit requires a public hearing and notice to the public. Next slide, please. So, the zoning commission has started work on developing a land use framework, and when I say land use framework, what I really mean is, what portions of our three zoning ordinances, do we need to look at, what portions of those need to be amended or revised in order to develop that land use framework? So, that, to begin a process on both the 6th and the 20th, and we'll continue discussion on the 18th, where hopefully, we will have a clear land use framework for them, we'll say, this section of the town zoning regulations needs to be revised in order to do these kinds of things. And that framework can include what zoning districts are appropriate for both retail, again, we're dealing with both retail and the production side. What zoning districts are appropriate? Do we want to consider local caps now that the legislative cap, so to speak, has been removed? Are there special conditions we want to include beyond just our typical special permit review conditions, separation conditions, or other things like that? And just to clarify, what approval process we use, I can't imagine that if we did allow them, it would be a special permit process that would require public hearing and notification and review. Timeframe-wise, this, since the moratorium is up on November 8, we, I think, the zoning commission wants to move towards some sort of action, a public hearing in September, and action on a final amendment later in the fall. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions, but I, well, I'm going to ask mine, because I wrote them down ahead of time. So, the board is not, I know the board's been talking, you know, the commission's been talking a lot, I know Amber's been there, too, on, you know, the regulations, but is there a required yes or no vote that we're actually going to allow retail marijuana? I mean, because, you know, some towns have already voted it down.
Sure, so let me answer it this way. The zoning ordinances must be revised to either allow them or to prohibit them.
Okay.
Again, as I said, if nothing is done, then they are deemed to be permissible, and we have to treat them like a similar uses. So, no matter, we would have to revise, do a text amendment to update the three zoning ordinances.
So, the act of renovating or redoing the zoning ordinance really is going to be the yes or no, correct? I mean, if you do an ordinance that allows for whatever, basically, we're saying we're going to allow sales.
Yes, I mean, the direction was to develop regulations to allow them in some form.
Okay.
That meeting, I don't remember which was...
Two meetings ago.
Two meetings.
The 6th or the 20th.
Right, the one that they wanted to change, the Talke Ridge project.
That would be the 6th.
So, the, the question came up, though, can, can the moratorium be extended? Again, can we extend our own moratorium by another year to allow for further discussion, development, input, or no?
So, I would answer it this way, I think certainly, the moratorium could be extended as long as we're working on a solution to the matter. I don't know, I would defer to the town attorney on whether you could just extend it for another year. I think that would be, you know, typically, moratoriums are temporary and limited in their design, and so there should be active work being done during the period.
All right, so that's for, so, and I just wanted to clarify your comment, the decision, we would be, we would be out of, we must make a legal decision, determination to allow or not to allow, that's a fair statement, you said that, correct?
I think that's exactly true.
And is, and just because, I don't know if people watch the meetings or are part of the conversation, the direction is, the direction is in the affirmative to allow? Is that what, is that what you sense the tenor of the...
Correct, I sense the tenor to be that, yes, sir.
Thank you.
If it was, if the tenor was in the negative, the ordinances would still have to be revised to say, this you shall be prohibited, essentially.
But I don't, my reason for the, just to make sure, I don't, the inflection of my voice is not left or right, just to make sure that the townspeople know we are making a decision, you may, you have the opportunity to voice your opinion against as well, as much as you can perform as well, so it's important that they know that.
And I would suggest people to tune into the zoning meetings, because you can really learn a lot of what's going on, they're talking about districts where they would allow sales or not allow sales. We get a 3% municipal tax benefit to the town on retail sales. And the other question, I did want to ask about Curaleaf, because I know that they're a medical manufacturer, right? Do they have any foot in the game or option of doing retail sales or production? I think I heard something about production, or they can ask for that.
My understanding from the licenses currently under consideration today is that there's not a combination of retail and production at the same location, that's my understanding. I don't, that may change over time, so they are production facility.
But they could produce for retail sale.
Today, they can, today, they are, they are under, we class them as medicinal today. So, but I think the draft is going, I suspect that the draft is going to remove the medical only and simply treat it as production facilities.
So, going back to the, so the May 22 revision that removed, we can implement our own cap, can we not? If we, we can vote for the affirmative, but we can, we can approve only essentially one license, or two, or 10.
We believe we can, and we believe that if, of course, if we have the ability to prohibit, then certainly, we would have the ability to limit. You know, we haven't done a strike-through version, we have not provided language to the town attorney, which, of course, we will do, so I would...
And some people are concerned, I think, about the fact that that limit has been lifted, I think we'll work collaboratively, do something responsible, but I also think that just pure economics would also have a say in how many would potentially come into online for retail as well.
And don't all, most of our surrounding towns, I know Avon is prohibited, sales, not sure about Granby, Canton.
So, my updated list on that, you know, a number of them have moratoriums, so Bloomfield has got a moratorium, Avon prohibited.
Prohibited, right.
Canton is permitting, Farmington is permitting, West Hartford is permitting.
Okay, that's interesting.
Granby, a moratorium.
Where do we kind of fall with the moratoriums ending in Connecticut? It's November, like kind of the average?
Our moratorium is, was November 8. You know, I think most folks adopted their moratorium kind of late summer and in the fall, so I suspect, I don't know the exact dates, but I suspect most municipalities adopted them right around the same time.
Okay, so the law will be kind of coming to a head. So the law will be kind of coming to a head at the same time. And with a public hearing in September, is that the first time of really taking the public's temperature on this? Or has there been any other efforts to take the temperature of our residents and public on how they feel?
So there was a public hearing when we enacted the moratoria. So I think there was certainly some public discourse at that time. But I think the process is that we kind of, we develop language and then provide it to the public for comment as part of that public hearing process.
Just for clarity, because I've been down this road before, is there any role that the Board of Selectmen plays in this?
So this is a, we are treating this as a land use matter. So it's, the zoning commission typically takes the lead on land use matters.
It originally, though, I was going to say, because Maria, we've talked about this a few times, it originally was, they were, when it first came out, they were saying it would be leaning towards an ordinance, right? And I think the state or whoever was making recommendations changed that to go with the zoning regulations.
Yeah. Early on, our town attorney, this is again last summer, thought, you know, perhaps, you know, regulating via an ordinance might be a sensible approach. But then as we learned more, as the situation evolved, we're just not seeing communities go in that direction. And as George indicated, they're really handling it through the land use process. So sort of the thinking on that has shifted in terms of that probably being the best way to, to approach the matter.
But just to be clear, though, that sounds like we can do either. So are we going to, could we get into a situation where it could be permitted by zoning and prohibited by Board of Selectmen ordinance? Because it sounds like we, based on that answer, it sounds like we both have.
I feel much better about what you're answering that question.
Yeah. And I'm not going to hold you legally to it, but again, we're going to get yelled at when it comes in by people that don't want it, and I won't understand our role in it before we get yelled at.
I think one thing that we do pass an ordinance on is the use of it, like under a smoking ordinance. So we could, the land use regulations could be regulating the business, right, and where the business can be located, but we can pass an ordinance about public use and.
So that makes sense, but I do want clarity from the town attorney on if we have the ability at this point. I'm not looking to do it, I just want to understand our role here, because that would be problematic. Again, if we have one board that permits it and another board that doesn't, right? So I just want to understand. But I agree with you too, in terms of that conversation has come up as well.
Well, now, I was going to make that point here, just for people who might be fearful about, we don't have a smoke, public smoking ordinance in town today, but I would say that, I would think the board, our board should do something if we move forward with retail sales to make it known that you can't just light up anywhere in town to eliminate that fear, you know? It's like when you walk through certain cities, that's pretty much all you smell. So I just wanted to say that I think that would be something we would all be working on.
I think we needed to talk through that, right? Because the whole point of this was to decriminalize it, so now we're going to recriminalize it? So I think we just need to, I just want to make sure we talk through it.
Yeah, we would.
So, again, I'm not saying one way or another, I just want to have clarity here so that we don't have two boards in conflict and a whole bunch of dollars spent.
I don't think it's that much different, though, than like open container rules around, you know, you can go buy alcohol.
The usage, I agree with you.
But, but, so it's similar, I think, in concept to that.
That, I just want to make sure, because again, we, you're right, we don't get involved in land use decisions, but if the legislation was poorly written as such that we could prohibit by ordinance, I would like to understand that so we can deal with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Okay. I'm going to move on to the first selectman's report, and everyone will be drilled to know that I'm not reading any first electman's report tonight. It's going out in the listserv, everything I think that I have in here, everybody else will talk about, other than the 501(c)(3) grant program, which we're meeting next week at the Finance Subcommittee to finalize. And that's all I'm going to say for my first electman's report. Turn it over to Maria.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Good evening. Just quickly, under our coronavirus update, I do want to bring to everyone's attention that the Farmington Valley Health District is again providing COVID vaccine appointments for people over the age of 18. We've provided a link to that information. That's just, again, a great local resource, and we hope that folks will be taking advantage of that. Moving on to departmental news and notes, quite a few announcements from the Culture, Parks and Recreation Department, some of them around the 50th anniversary celebration. We really want to thank the Friends of Simsbury Farms. They are going to be helping us celebrate the 50th anniversary on Saturday, July 30th. There's going to be a whole day of special activities. We've highlighted some of them here in the manager's report. A lot of free activities for our residents, such as youth and tennis clinics, pickleball clinic, games on the pool deck, an open golf tournament, et cetera. So again, we really want to thank them for that. There's also going to be a band performing at 6:00 PM that evening at the Simsbury Farms Rink. We do have additional information on that event at friendsofsimsburyfarms.com. Also related to the 50th anniversary, we have a number of family fun runs that are coming up on July 19th, August 2nd, and August 16th. We have magician scheduled for the pool deck on July 22nd. There's going to be a Caddyshack themed movie night at the golf on August 6th, which is great. I think it's going to be a lot of fun.
Lock them in.
Yes. We have a poolside showing of Finding Nemo on August 12th, a glow-in-the-dark golf event on August 19th. This is just a sampling of some of the events. And then all of this will conclude with a concert and fireworks show for our community on Saturday, August 27th. So again, really want to thank Tom Tiberzki and his staff and the various volunteers that are really helping to make all of these events happen. Just a quick reminder and sort of a public safety announcement for the general public, we have had a lot of our patrons out at the Simsbury Farms campus recently who are failing to slow down and stop at the stop signs while they're visiting the campus. They're just essentially driving through, but we do have a lot of folks on foot, including young children. So we're really just trying to remind everybody to please stop and observe the stop signs, particularly near intersections and crosswalks at the Farms campus this summer. And some very good news, as you'll recall, we started setting aside money through the CNR program, reinvesting in our playground infrastructure. The West Mountain Park Playground, a replacement has begun. You may also recall that we had experienced some delays related to acquiring playground equipment as part of the supply chain issues, but again, that replacement has begun. The new playground is scheduled to be installed around August 5th. And recently, I think it was just today, the department shared a really nice rendering through their Facebook account of what that playground and play landscape is going to look like. So very good work there, and I know folks have been anxiously awaiting that installation. From our library, just a quick reminder that there is still time to sign up for the summer reading program. We have a link to that information in the report. And also, just a really exciting initiative, you might recall that the library was the recipient of an ARPA grant through the third round of stimulus to purchase the book bike, which is a really just wonderful resource for the community. So they have a couple of upcoming events. There's going to be an event on the Terriffle Green on July 16th, as well as a trivia night event with the bike on August 10th at Iron Horse Pub. So we encourage folks to check out those events as well. From the Planning Department, really pleased to announce a couple of appointments. So we recently hired Savannah Nicole Villalba to work as our Assistant Town Planner. She started earlier this month. She has bachelor's degrees in sociology and urban and community studies from UConn, and her master's degree is in urban and environmental policy and planning from Tufts. She's currently a candidate for AICP certification, which is the certification through the Professional Planning Association. She's previously held planning positions with the Regional Council of Governments as well as municipalities. Savannah Nicole is currently chairing the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee for the Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association. We're really excited to have her join our planning department, and congrats and welcome to Savannah Nicole. And today was Andrea Knortens, first day as our new building department specialist. She joins us from a diverse career ranging from real estate. She served as a program director for adult education. She served as a training manager for an international bank. She just has a really, really neat background that I think will serve her well in this particular role. She has bachelor's degrees from Smith College in government and history and a master's degree in applied linguistics from UMass Boston. We really also think she's just going to make a great addition to the team and want to offer our congrats and welcome to Andrea as well. And from Public Works, the Connecticut DOT will be working on a milling and paving project that's going to start on Route 10202 near the Avon-Simsbury border on July 17th. They're expecting the milling work to be completed around July 28th. The paving work is scheduled for August 14th through August 25th. They are striving to complete that work actually in the evening hours from about 7:00 PM through 5:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, just to really try and do their best to minimize any disruption to traffic patterns. So we are just doing our best to share that information with the public so they can plan their travel plans accordingly.
But if time was running, it'd done half the time.
He just went out and did it right.
Great. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to get into selectman liaison and subcommittee reports. And the first, I am going to turn it over to Amber first, because I know she has two big updates to give, and then we can move down.
All right. So both of these updates are from the Aging and Disability Commission. One is that on July 16th, which is a Saturday, at the skating rink at Simsbury Farms, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM will be the Community Picnic, which is a free event for individuals and families with disabilities who live in Simsbury. The food is going to be provided by Fitzgerald's, and we will have music, magic, and activities and desserts. And it's a very welcoming event, again, at the skating rink at Simsbury Farms. You can RSVP, please RSVP by July 8th to the social services, and it's a wonderful event. Also tomorrow, as a liaison to the Aging and Disability Commission, I've been working for the past several months on an Aging Well in Simsbury survey. This is to continue Simsbury's AARP designation as an age-friendly community. And this is important because demographically in the United States, we are aging as a population. By, I think it's by 2030, one in five Americans will be older than 65. And so as our population ages, and in Simsbury, we want people to be able to stay in our community and age in place. So we really want to hear from people that are 50 and older, which is the AARP's cutoff for kind of falling into their wheelhouse of an aging population. And we want to hear what's on your mind and what concerns you have about aging in Simsbury. And the survey tomorrow night, we are going to have a panel discussion at Eno Hall. It's going to be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We have the state president of the AARP Connecticut coming in. I will be on the panel, and Diana Yisley, the co-chair of the Aging and Disability Commission. And we will talk a little bit about what it means to be an AARP age-friendly community and why the survey is going to help us gather this information. It will help us make, you know, decisions about when we look to do our annual budget, and we want to hear from you. And so come see us tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at Eno Hall. And we're going to have ice cream also.
I do want to say, I am over 50. Like, I like that that's the age, so I can, and I did do the survey, and there was a lot of good questions in there, so nice job on that. Now, going to turn it over, do you want to give a public safety update?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. So for those folks that I'm sure tuned in, as it's the top quarterly event in town, was the public safety meeting recently. We had a robust discussion around the challenges surrounding CAR 17, as the folks in the know, and I just played to sound cool, and I call it CAR 17, but it's a second ambulance. All joking aside, there's been an inadequate level of staffing for CAR 17. So Maria was kind enough to facilitate a meeting between the first selectwoman and myself, Karen, the executive director of Suzeray Volunteer Ambulance Association, as well as board president, and two board members, one of which is a former member of this board, Chris Kelly. Last Thursday, we had a very robust discussion, I would say, around the concerns from the community side. We've received a lot of feedback from residents, from former employees, former volunteers surrounding staffing and perceptions at the ambulance association. Just want to be clear to the public that the town of Simsbury, the town manager, this board, has no formal authority over the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. I've learned more about SVAA and the partnership with the town in the last two or three years than folks would know in a lifetime. We transferred the licensure for, keep me honest here, for the paramedics, and previously they had the EMT license. So they hold those licenses on behalf of the town with the state. And there is an extremely robust and thorough, as there should be, process if that were ever to be changed. And at this point, the town of Simsbury, based on our assessment, does not have the ability to change it based on the contractual EMS plan that we have, where SVAA is meeting the first ambulance arrival time. I say that only as background. What's important for this body and for the town is that we all agreed in that meeting that the second ambulance is something that absolutely needs to be staffed. We had a verbal agreement in the fall when Eric and I met with them about staffing that ambulance seven to seven. We had strong support from our partners at SVAA to do that. Sadly, they have not been able to live up to that promise, and they are looking for ways to do that. They owe Wendy, myself, this board, a response in a month's time on that topic. And we've also asked them to formally address some of the other issues surrounding the organization that are not under the town's direction, but have certainly come to the town. And we want to make sure that the community understands that SVAA is taking these matters very seriously. They pride themselves on providing top-level public safety, as our police department and our fire department do. And to say we had the board's attention and assurance that they would be addressing is an understatement. They take this very seriously, and we will be looking forward to their official response in early August. And thankfully, Maria has already set that meeting up for us. So Wendy, I don't know if I missed anything.
Yeah, I was just going to say that we've paid attention to all the emails and concerns people have had and allegations. We have pushed them to the SVAA board. They have promised to research and do diligence on, you know, facts or not facts related there. And that's the best step that we could take at this point in time. And like Sean said, they're going to come back in a month with the data, and then we can share that with the public.
Yep. And just to add on, we've made it very clear that we're not just looking for, yep, everything's good. We are looking for a very much a formal response. And, you know, our board, our previous boards have had experience with when there are allegations of severe nature, often independent investigation attorney is a wise route to have some impartiality in that investigation and shed lights on what actually happened. And then, so again, it'll be up to SVAA to determine their path, but that was one of the suggested remedies.
Okay. Good. Good update.
Got a question on that.
Yeah.
In your conversations or in your observations, I'm pointing this to Sean because I think of our, your experience, our experience, and gather your professional experience, certainly Chris on there as well, I think that's a great, I mean, it's a strong nod to us. But do you think that they have the proper performance management process in place for evaluation of administration? It's one thing to talk about execution of the service, but it's another thing to talk about performance management of staffing. So is that something of staff, excuse me?
You know, it's, I think one of the questions that SVAA is going to have to come back and answer to us, Chris, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not privy to their, to their reporting structure, I'm not privy to their data collection. I mean, we've done, Eric and Melissa and Maria did some pretty substantial analysis on their call responses. You know, it's a challenge of, they are in compliance with their responsiveness from a first ambulance, and often the second ambulance, when it is staffed and/or mutual aid, is well within, I would call, industry norms. That doesn't mean that that's satisfactory to SVAA or the community. So I'm giving you a non-answer in that. I am not in a position to judge their organizational structure. We really ask them to prove to us through their expertise and as independently as they possibly could that they have the situation well in hand.
So that's, so I'd say, I appreciate, and I think in the same way, in the sense they wouldn't be an official judgment, just allows me to open up the conversation that I'm going to, I'm going to assume that we've got the right people on the board there. Certainly aware of many of them, and I would hope that in that dialogue, if it comes out that that's something that is found to be lacking, not in a negative term, but something that needs to be updated to meet the evolution of that organization, that they would turn to the town to work with Maria and members of the Personnel Committee on this board here, who could assist them with putting in place the proper performance management process if it didn't exist.
You know, I think that's an important point. You know, I know the town manager has reached out and offered, you know, as a peer to the organization to help with that space. It is a challenge in that this is a unique situation from a contractor and a service provider, in that we don't put out a former RFP, former, formal RFP and define the scope. We work with the state, or we work with SVAA to file the five-year, you know, EMS plan that we're, we have coming up, and this board will have to move that forward. So it's a bit of a unique relationship in that sense, Chris, in that SVAA does pride themselves on being an independent organization. So we made it clear that if there was a direct need from the town, either through need from the town, either through resource, knowledge, and I opened the door to a well-thought-out plan, if there was a financial consideration, again, I didn't commit this entire board, but again, I am willing to have that conversation if it moves the quality of public safety forward to the level that we all expect. So.
Sean, I have a question. You mentioned, it sounds like their board, the SVAA board, is considering having a third party come in to help with this evaluation. Now, that's something they could move forward with before they even report to us in August, correct? Like, there's no...
Yeah, I mean, I want to be clear. We gave them the suggestion, I think. We gave them a substantial amount of data, a substantial amount of feedback, and a substantial amount of opinion from our side. They asked for time to digest that and formulate a plan. It is an option on the table. I don't know if they're going to go with it.
It's something for them to consider, but I guess my point is, is they could move forward with that process. That's not tied to them reporting back to us in August, whether...
They could, but I, I mean, again, there's, they're going to have to, I mean, they would have to define the scope. They would have to hire an attorney. I mean, it's, it is not a cheap process. So I'd be surprised if they were able to do that before August.
Yeah, it sounded like, what I took away was that they were, the SVAA board was going to do the investigation and potentially use their attorneys to look into the allegations that were received, at least from that level. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was their primary answer, but I think they were going to debate and discuss whether they did move with the independence. They also have an issue of what is disclosable to us and what is not, right? Because they are a private organization, and, you know, we have an obligation to provide information to the public. Their HR matters aren't necessarily subject to the same oversight, you know, again. So I want to be respectful of that while at the same time, holding them accountable for the ultimate goal of CAR 17 has to be on the road at a level that we've all agreed to, and the community has to have confidence in that organization to provide public safety. And that's really what we left it with them as. And I had, and Wendy had, and Maria had a lot of suggestions for how to get there, but at the end of the day, I don't believe that we have any charter or statutory authority at this point to mandate any of that, is my understanding in talking to the Town Manager and Town Attorney. So.
Okay.
It was a fun meeting.
So, I know you're, you're, it's interesting.
I'm sorry.
A lot of dates here.
No.
Okay, Chris, you have a second?
I just have one plug for the, along with the lines of the celebration year, this year, it's already been mentioned, and some of the dates have gone through. On July 30th, which is the Friends of Simsbury Farms Celebration that is occurring, that's going to be an event that, although most of the events are going to have a voluntary component to them, you know, labor component, that's a big event that is looking for volunteers for the Simsbury, Friends of Simsbury Farms on Saturday, 30th. If you've got tangential knowledge of the organization or not, it's, I don't think there's any specific skill sets that you have to be required to have. I think it's just bodies and labor do it to help participate and celebrate that day. So I just, that's a plug. If anybody wants to volunteer for the Friends of Simsbury Farms Celebration on July 30th.
Family Day? That's the family day?
It's the family day.
Okay, okay. Eric, I know you've been, you've been away too, but I was wondering if you had any, anything you want to share or catch us up on?
I think that has not been shared. Thanks to everyone.
Okay. And I just want to mention the Personnel Subcommittee met, did we meet last week? Yeah, we're moving our next meeting before our August 8th meeting, which was a smart way to handle it, so we could take care of anything on the 8th. We are looking at putting forward to get some estimates on a potential employee satisfaction survey that we all discussed, and what was the thing, and the Personnel Handbook. Those are two big items that we're going to get some figures on over the next couple of months. Okay, so now we can move to Selectman action. And the first item is the tax refund requests. No detail needed here, I don't believe. So I'm going to suggest we move effective July 11, 2022, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $7,404.66, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute the tax refunds. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is a proposed Friends of Simsbury Farms donation. And I know Tom's here, Maria's here, and I will let those guys, Tom, take it away.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So, the Friends of Simsbury Farms, as you know, they've been around since 2016. Jerry Wetchen was instrumental in getting that group going. And they have a great team right now. They've expanded their board, and they've been working really hard over the last six months with my team as well to enhance the property. That's what their mission is. And I put in your cover letter, I'll just mention a couple of the activities that they've done, I'm sorry, a couple of the donations that they've made. They bought a TV, a large TV monitor for the lobby in the pool, where, in the pool and ice rink, where we've been advertising our program, special events, getting word out about other upcoming events. They've done a root covering project at the golf course. If you've been on the fitness trail at all recently, they put up, they paid for all new directional signs on the course, and we're in the process. They've also purchased a large welcome sign that'll be installed later this week or early next week. And most recently, just about a week and a half ago, we installed the expression swing at Simsbury Farms. And that's a swing where a parent and a child can actually sit facing each other and swing, and you can see the smiles and all that stuff. So it's been very popular. And they're always working, always giving me a call, what else do we, what else can we do next? And their goal was to try to do $50,000 of donations for the 50 years, and it's an ambitious goal. They're working toward it. They have their fundraiser on September 30th at Simsbury Farms. It's a big golf tournament, so if you're able to attend either the event or the dinner, that'd be great. But these projects have added up to a significant amount of money, almost $14,000. And I would love to have the town accept those donations so we can move forward and come back again with more donations in another six months.
We love accepting donations.
I know. So, but I just a huge thank you to them and how hard they've worked. And they're very thoughtful in the discussions about the list we give them, and they're eager to, to help wherever they can.
We love the T flags.
Oh, I love the T flags and the big flag over the golf starters. That's another one that's on there as well. And those are very popular. So.
They look great. Okay, so move effective July 11, 2022, to accept donations totaling $13,969.34 from the Friends of Simsbury Farms for an assortment of improvements at the Simsbury Farms recreational complex as presented.
Move that.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Friends of Simsbury Farms. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is the purchase and sale agreement and supplemental appropriation for 56 Woolcut Road. We have Tom Roy here to talk about this one.
Popular topic.
I know. Well, actually, I think, I think we're kind of at the end of a long road here. The property adjacent to our landfill became available for sale. We actually missed the opportunity. It was bought by somebody other than the town about a year, year and a half ago. He quickly notified us that we were encroaching upon that property. There's about 11 acres there. When we looked at it in more detail, and we looked at all of the work involved in taking the landfill facility off of that property, it was actually cheaper to purchase the property. And it also eliminates a significant environmental risk. There's a residential house that's adjacent to our industrial facility and closed landfill. Through negotiation, we were able to come up with an agreed-upon price of $175,000. It's a little bit more than what the appraisal was, but at the same time, the adjacent property, 50 Woolcut, which is only on half an acre, recently sold for $180,000. So I think it's certainly a reasonable price that we can look at our residents, say they're getting a value. And it opens up a lot of opportunities for us as we move forward to either change how we interact with landfill, or certainly to provide a buffer, and most importantly, a gateway, as so many residents and outside business people enter Simsbury through Woolcut Road, and there's the ability to knock down that house. I think Chris might be the one to press the button on the excavator.
Okay, does anybody have any?
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. We are recommending that the funding, because it's a land purchase, for this come from the general fund reserves. We did include in your packet for you that the general fund reserve is current in a healthy, currently in a healthy position, and is actually in excess of the recommended level under the Board of Finance Fund Balance Policy. We did also just want to flag for your attention that we have received an estimate of around $40,000 additional that would be needed to complete the demolition of the residential structure. And that, since that does not need to occur immediately, we would plan to do that work later and would ask for those funds as part of year-end closeout. Just one other point, the Town Attorney is preparing a purchase and sale agreement. So we would be seeking your approval, essentially as part of the motion, that as long as the agreement is approved as to form by the Town Attorney and consistent with the terms that we've discussed, that we would be able to move forward with the purchase and sale agreement. And the Board of Finance will be reviewing this for action at the July 19th meeting. They were briefed in executive session at their last meeting.
I was calling you Scott. Sean?
So the $40,000, seems like a lot of money to knock down a house. Is that the demo? Or the removal?
The demo is the easy part. It's the abatements. It's the expensive part. So we're going in under the assumption that we believe there's going to be asbestos that has to be abated before we do that.
That was my next question, because...
There was a time not that long ago where, in order to get rid of a building like this, we'd call down to our friends at the Fire Department. They would plan a Saturday drill, and a few hours later, it was gone.
I believe I suggested that for Dewey. We did that for Dewey Farm, right?
Dewey Farm, we did that for Barn Door Triangle.
We couldn't do it for the Hudson though, because of the asbestos wallpaper, right? Or the...
And the proximity to the river.
Yeah. Okay. So, and can that number escalate? Because if they get in there and all of a sudden, the plaster is full of asbestos and everything else?
That number is fairly reasonable. There's always the chance that something completely unforeseen should happen, but I think, as you know, I like to put the estimate so that we have a little leftover as opposed to...
Yeah, no, that's fair. It's just, yeah, we got surprised on the Hudson one. That wasn't your fault or anyone's fault, but yeah.
Is there any cost savings in the fact that you don't have to take it very far?
We can't store asbestos there.
I like the way you're thinking. I thought there was going to be cost savings.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so move effective July 11, 2022, to approve the purchase of 56 Woolcut Road for $175,000. Further move to authorize Town Manager Maria Capiola to execute any and all documents related to the purchase of 56 Woolcut Road as approved to form by the Town Attorney. A supplemental, I'll make the supplemental also, move effective July 11, 2022, to approve a supplemental appropriation utilizing general fund reserves for the purchase of the parcel of land at 56 Woolcut Road in the amount of $175,000, and to recommend this to the Board of Finance.
Move that.
Thank you, Eric.
Second.
Sean, second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll be owning that soon.
I'm just going to stick around.
Okay, oh, you're going to stay up here now? Because we're going to talk about the supplemental appropriation on the multi-use trail connector, Project L128, whatever, from Bloomfield to Terrifield. So I'm going to let Tom keep going here and talk about that one.
Okay, great. This is the first of the three trails that we've talked about in order to connect Simsbury proper over to Bloomfield. This has been in design for a number of years, and it's been complicated by the fact that it's through the LOTZIP Grant Program, which is administered by CROG. But more importantly, we're going along a state roadway. So we've been involved heavily with Connecticut DOT. They have different standards than we would typically have for how we are looking at projects like this. We had to do an in-depth investigation into the rock face to make sure the rock was going to be safe. We're actually going to be scooting out and narrowing some of 187, which has required them to require us to upgrade their drainage. The nice thing is, all of these additional costs, everything associated with construction, is funded through the LOTZIP program and is 100% grant reimbursable, and is not coming off the town tax dollars. The good news is, if you're in agreement with this, we're going to be able to get to construction late summer, early fall, ready to hit the ground running, in which case we'll be completed for next summer, middle of next summer.
Okay. And can you just highlight this, where this is, just so we...
This is a trail that's going from Bloomfield to Terrifield along 189, which tragically, there was actually a cyclist that died there a couple of years ago. It's truly a limited-access highway. It's really not a place that is safe at all for cyclists. And I think there's a real important connection here to get Simsbury and Terrifield connected into Bloomfield, which connects people into Hartford. So anybody who lives in Terrifield that would want to or have an interest in commuting by bicycle, this is critical in order to get them a safe passageway through that area. I also think when we look at connecting Terrifield and all that Terrifield has to offer, I think it's really going to be a destination trail. And I think what's important when I talk about destination trails, people stop, get out, and spend money.
It's interesting, because my office is right there at the end of the trail, in Bloomfield side. And I'm surprised every day when I go to go get lunch, how many people are actually on that trail. And they just kind of go and turn, stop, turn around, back, go into, back into, towards Bloomfield, so.
Yeah, and so Bloomfield is 50% of this project. We're administering it. And this is going to bring us right to the end of Main Street. And then that gives us now the ability to build the other two pieces. The next section would be from Route 10 to Curtis Park. And then we have the funding in place where we've started the preliminary investigation to say, how do we get from Curtis Park to Terrifield proper?
Just while you're here, what's, how's the update on Hot Meadow to Curtis?
Hot Meadow to Curtis, we are about 95% design. We're going through some final investigation into some of materials. That section is going to actually have to be elevated on boardwalk. And there's been a lot of back and forth in terms of what's the appropriate material, whether it's concrete or aluminum or wood. Quite frankly, I'm not, as much as I like everything in the world to be made out of wood, boardwalks for bike paths made out of wood deteriorate, they cause splinters, they're slippery. So the design engineers are currently specifying an aluminum plank. I think both Adam Kessler, our Deputy Town Engineer, and myself prefer concrete. So we're probably going to have a meeting with them in the next two weeks to kind of finalize that. And then we're waiting for grant funding to implement the construction.
Is there a cost differential between those two types of materials?
There is definitely going to be a cost differential between those two. Also important to see how that would be handled by the grant. Wood would obviously be the cheapest. And then within wood, there's different varieties. Our consultant at one point had specified like mahogany, but the folks from National Park Service were not in agreement with that because it was sourced out of rainforests, and we got into a long debate with that. Again, I think concrete's really our answer. It's going to last for 25 years or better, so.
It is, but it's also impervious, and, you know, creates flooding, too.
This is going to be elevated above the ground.
So it's going to catch it and be a sluice way, then. The river already floods on its own. It's not going to make it any worse.
Okay. All right, so move effective July 11, 2022, to accept additional grant monies from the LOTZIP program for this subject project. Further move to authorize a Town Manager to execute any and all documents related to the additional grant monies received for the subject project. Further move to approve a supplemental appropriation, the amount of 1.254,200, as it relates to the Bloomfield to Terrifield multi-use trail connector with the project number written, and to recommend this to the Board of Finance.
So moved.
Okay, Heather, and then Eric's, we'll take Eric. You want to second that? Eric will second that?
Sounds good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Moving along, literally. Okay, the next item is another supplemental appropriation related to the barns at Meadowwood, and I'm going to let, again, Maria and Tom.
Want to start off on this one?
Sure, sure. You may recall that you had authorized us to apply for two separate $20,000 grants through the State Office of Historic Preservation that would allow for us to pay for planning and architectural services related to the restoration of the barns of the property. And again, these would be for the historic barns. You might recall there are some barns further into the interior of the property that are actually still in use. This work will not cover those barns, but again, the more historic barns that are more visible from the roadway. We did recently receive notice that we were awarded each of those two $20,000 grants, so very positive news at this point in time. We just need to move forward with appropriating those grant monies, as well as essentially creating a CNR project to essentially fund, fund that work.
And we've gone through the RFQ process. We have a design professional ready to get going. I think this is a very time-critical project, as every day those barns are getting a little older and a little, the poor roofs and everything else. It's important to get our hands on what we have there and stop any deterioration.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments on that? Okay, so move effective July 11, 2022, to approve a supplemental appropriation, the amount of $40,020 for the State Historic Preservation Office Historic Preservation Enhancement Grant, and 20 for the Survey and Planning Grant for the Meadowwood Barns, and to recommend this to the Board of Finance. Further move to create a CNR project to complete this work.
Move that.
Sean, move that?
I'll second.
Amber, second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
You're not staying for the next one?
No.
I'm good.
Okay. So, thanks, Tom. So this is the settlement agreement for the Kavanaugh Claim Under the Workers' Compensation Act that we've been talking about. And I'm going to let Maria share some of that with the public.
Great, thank you. So you may recall, we have discussed this claim previously in executive session, unless the matter was previously confidential. We do have a retiree of our Police Department who retired in 2006, who at the time of his retirement, still had an open claim under the Workers' Compensation Act. At that time, the case was not closed, nor was there a reserve for future expenses. That was... not closed, nor was there a reserve for future expenses that was established for this particular claim. This claim did come, come to the attention of my office. We were very fortunate in that Kerma, who is our workers' compensation insurance carrier, along with legal counsel, negotiated a full and final settlement with the claimant for this case. We have for you provided that settlement agreement. So this evening, we are seeking your authorization for us to execute that settlement agreement, as well as to approve a supplemental appropriation to fund that. We are looking for a supplemental appropriation of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That would cover the terms of the settlement agreement, as well as a small number of miscellaneous but related items that we've provided for you under the financial impact section. Based on the nature of the expense, we are also recommending that this come from the general fund reserves. And similar to reporting out earlier in the evening, again, we are at seventeen and a half percent of budgeted expenditures for our fund balance, which is in excess of our fund balance policy at this time.
And once this is paid, we are no longer, there's, we're done, there's nothing else.
This would be a full and final settlement for this case. That's correct.
Okay. Any, anybody have any questions, comments? Move effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two to approve the settlement agreement regarding Mr. Kavanaugh's claim under the Workers Compensation Act. Further move to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute any and all documents related to the settlement agreement. And move effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two to approve a supplemental appropriation utilizing general fund reserves for the purpose of funding the settlement agreement regarding Mr. Kavanaugh's claim under the Workers Compensation Act and related expenses in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and to recommend this to the Board of Finance.
Move that.
Sean, move that?
I'll second.
Amber, second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. The next item is the Revenue Technician Classification Moratorium of Agreement, which we have pushed, we have gone through this at the personnel subcommittee. But I'll let Maria give background on that. So.
Great, thank you, Wendy. Yeah, so we received a reclassification request from the incumbent in our part-time tax clerk position. We did conduct an analysis and use methodology comparable to, comparable to other reclassification requests, which, you know, included evaluating current duties, an external benchmarking analysis, a review of comparable positions in other communities, as well as an internal position comparison analysis. At the conclusion of that review, it was determined that the creation of a Revenue Technician Classification would be warranted with a grade of T seven on the Secretarial Clerical and Library Employees Pay Plan. We did have an obligation to review and negotiate this with the CSA union, since this position is represented by that bargaining unit. Conceptually, the union was comfortable with those terms. And the union and the incumbent in the position have executed the memorandum of agreement with the understanding that I could not execute that agreement until we received approval from the Board of Selectmen. So this evening, we would be looking to you for the creation of that classification, the establishment of the pay range for the position, approval of the job description, as well as authorization to sign the memorandum of agreement with the union codifying the terms.
Okay. Not sure if anybody has any questions. I will just read the motion. Move effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two to approve the creation of the Revenue Technician Job Classification and Job Description as presented. Further move to establish the position at grade of T seven of the Secretarial Clerical and Employees Pay Plan. Further move to endorse authorization of the town manager to enter in a memorandum of agreement codifying the terms of the tentative agreement on the matter with the union and the incumbent. Eric, you want to move that?
No. So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. The next up is the Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement. And I will again defer to our town manager.
Great, thank you. So this was the last of the three CSA agreements that was waiting to come before the Board of Selectmen. We had been going through various draft iterations to make sure that we got the document polished up and in good shape before presenting it to you. So this agreement is consistent with the two other CSA agreements that we reviewed at your last, I believe it was your last meeting, and also very consistent with the overall packages, both benefits and wages, that we negotiated with our ASME and dispatchers and police unions about a year, year and a half ago. So we are recommending its approval this evening. We have included, as Melissa always does, a really excellent job for us, a very thorough cost analysis of the value of that contract over the four-year life of the agreement. This particular group represents approximately twenty-four full-time employees.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this item? Okay. Move effective July eleventh, twenty twenty-two to authorize town manager Maria Capriola to execute the proposed successor collective bargaining agreement between the town of Simsbury and the CSA A and P from July first to twenty nineteen to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, which shall enter into effect retroactively from July first, twenty nineteen, and expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving along. Next up is the non-union compensation. Again, we went through this at the personnel subcommittee, but I will let Maria give her summary on this item.
Sure. So typically, the Board of Selectmen approves any potential annual general wage increase adjustment for our non-union staff, typically on an annual basis. During the budget process, we looked at the CCM negotiated settlement data, that statewide data, to get a sense of where general wage settlements were coming in. And we did budget a two-point three-five percent G W I for our non-union staff in contingency. We are still seeing settlements come out around two-point-three percent. We've also provided data for you on our internal comparisons for various bargaining groups. For the current fiscal year, general wage increases are in the range of two-point-two-five to two-point-five percent. So this is right in line with that. So we are, again, we reviewed this with personnel, recommending the two-point-three-five percent general wage increase for non-union staff upon successful completion of their annual performance review. Just one other note, because we do have a number of new non-union positions that were approved through the budget process and through reorganizations. And typically, for those folks in a probationary period, they do not receive the G W I retroactively, but prospectively upon completing their probation successfully.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay, easy group tonight. Move to approve a two-point-three-five general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in a non-probationary status retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-two, pending a satisfactory annual performance evaluation. Further move to approve a two-point-three-five general wage increase for unaffiliated staff in a probationary status upon successful completion of their probationary period. Further move to adjust the salary ranges for non-union classifications as presented.
Move that.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we get to a discussion on, on the review and amendments to the town charter. So Sean had asked to put this on the agenda to just kind of initiate a conversation on the charter. Do you want to?
I do. So I don't think we need to take any action tonight, but I think this is an important process that we start wrapping our minds around both from a financial and from an intellectual standpoint. Maria did a great job of outlining in the memo our requirements that we have to review the charter no less often, right, than, than seven years. That date is coming up next December, correct? So December of twenty-three. I would strongly suggest that as a board, we consider this, as Maria suggests, from a budgetary standpoint, and talk about where this ranks in our priorities. And I think the intent of tonight is to take everybody's temperature, get us to start thinking about this, because this is a twelve to eighteen-month process typically. And personally, from experience, I think this will be my third charter. We have the opportunity to potentially put the questions on the ballot for presidential in twenty-four, which is often eighty to ninety percent participation in this community. So it's a really, I think, thoughtful time to have the residents weigh in on whether they want to change and how they want to change the government in this community. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to make massive changes. They can be simple items like cleaning up language, making things gender neutral like we did in the past. They could be bringing in, you know, different forms of government, et cetera. I don't anticipate that from my standpoint. But we've all received feedback from many folks in the community. We all have, you know, our own experiences here on the board. And I know Maria has a long list of items she'd like us to consider, what we'll call cleanup items, places where perhaps first, first selectman was not removed and town manager probably should have, or clarification of roles and responsibilities. We have a really important role in that we not only convene this commission and we pick the members, and there's a lot of ways we can do that, either through recommendation from town committees or through our own interview process. We used a combination of both last time, and we actually went heavier on the unaffiliated folks than we have ever had. And candidly, I think it yielded a really good discussion from all three groups of folks in town. Additionally, we set the scope in terms of the initial scope. So any item that we want an answer to, keep me honest here, we can ask for that.
Absolutely.
They can say no action, they can recommend action, but they are obligated to consider any item that we ask for it to be reviewed. And then they can go ahead and review the scope from there as well. So they are empowered to go beyond our scope. We get a crack at asking questions and seeing what the draft recommendation might be. I believe we get one chance to ask for reconsideration or review of items. And then ultimately, we would say yea or nay on each question and actually send it to the ballot, very similar to how our budgetary process would work. So that's Sean's high-level version of it. I would recommend that we get Bob G. Cruzenzo in here, probably in the next couple of months, to further answer your guys' questions, if you think that makes sense, to start wrapping our head around a much more in-depth version of what I just said. But I think it is, I think it is prudent for us to have a bit of a discussion tonight and again, start, start wrapping our heads around what we, when, most importantly, we want to do this. And then whom we might want on the commission in terms of numbers, in terms of process. And then again, the scope is obviously the final piece of that. So.
So I have comments, but I'd like to have other people here, because I've talked about this a few times. If they have comments here.
No, I'm in full support. I think I'm probably one of the first people to voice publicly a concern that, that with some form of government not being, it's the need for charter, for consideration to a charter reform. So I appreciate, Sean, for you actually taking initiative, probably from hearing other people mention things and saying, well, we're going to do something, you're going to do something. So take the lead, put it on the board, put it on the docket. And I think from, from beyond the fact that we have a, we have a requirement in the seven years, I think it's actually natural, considering this is the way that I'm framing it in my mind. We have a new form of government. And the charter that was, that was adopted, at the same time that a new form of government was adopted, was, was new. And it wasn't fully formed because it had, they hadn't lived together yet. And now we've lived together for a number of years. And I'm sure, I'm quite certain there's some efficiencies that can be gained because of how we've evolved our form of government and how we're living together and the improvements that can be made. So I'm looking forward to the, to the process.
My comments would be that I'm not looking forward to the process, just putting it out there. I think we're still relatively new in this form of government. And yes, I know that there are, I've heard about a lot of potential changes. And, you know, I guess, being on the board for two and a half, three years, I don't see all the changes that I think would be needed. So for the amount of process that would have to happen, that's just a concern for me. As a member of a town committee, we've talked and talked to an Aldi brought up, that we've brought up the idea of Board of Ed election by vote to the public, which hasn't happened in the town. I know the planning and zoning, merging of commissions has been brought up. Term limits has been brought up, the budget timeline and redundancies. So to me, there's a lot of potential large items that are on this. I prefer to think about potentially what the budget, you know, what we would have to budget in next year's budget in order to do this. And that's really what I'm thinking of, is how much is it going to cost and what's the scope? And I also feel that the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three activities that we have right now take a lot of town resources. I'm not going to list them all, but I feel like we have a lot of things that are requiring town resources. And this would force us to prioritize some things over the other. So those are just my, my feelings on this.
I guess my question is, just to be clear, like the, the December of twenty-three deadline is the deadline to start this process. So what we're, and, and the process would need to be done in one year. That would be the latest we could technically start it to be done by December of twenty-four, which is when the new charter needs to be in effect. That's the seven years.
We just need to essentially consider it within the seven years. So as long as we begin that process in advance of December fourth, twenty twenty-three, we would be all set from sort of a timeframe perspective, where the twenty-twenty-four date, if we wanted to try to keep it to about a year, as Sean mentioned, there is a presidential election in twenty twenty-four.
Right.
And there is the requirement under the charter to reach a threshold of fifteen percent of the electors. So there is a little bit of advantage if we can piggyback it off of, you know, perhaps, you know, a presidential election as a for example.
Right. How much? It would, it, it seems like it would make sense that we would consider this in this upcoming budget, right?
Absolutely.
Because we would have to start the funding.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's correct. So typically, you know, to do a charter revision, it's, it's quite a labor-intensive process. And typically, just to example, some resources that are needed, there will be legal expenses. I may will have to confirm with our town attorney to find out what this would essentially cost on a project basis. Typically, a charter revision does fall outside of the general retainer. We would typically also need a commission clerk. Oftentimes, the charter revision commission is going to be meeting one to two times, I would say, a month. So that's an additional expense.
I think that twenty-six times last time, yeah.
Resource people. So there, you know, maybe resource people that we need to bring in that aren't necessarily, you know, free or are part of our other services. So those are just some examples of items that Melissa and myself and Bob will need to work on and really prepare a good budget estimate for the upcoming budget, so we can submit that to you all during budget development. So I think that will be very helpful. Also, I think by just doing a little bit of pre-planning, you know, if you think about things like membership composition and how many people, and as Sean was saying, you know, how do you want to interview those people, select those people, scope, I'm sure like you.
The scope is.
Scope is a really big question. And, you know, I've heard so much feedback in my time here from residents, business owners, staff members, my own observations, our labor attorney, our town attorney, there's a lot of opportunity, I think, as Chris pointed out nicely, to maybe look at some efficiency improvements. Some things that Sean pointed out could be as simple as housekeeping improvements. But some of the, the more hefty issues, right, are very much steeped in our tradition. And those are going to be much harder and much more difficult conversations to be had. So again, I think with some of this sort of just general brainstorming around scope ideas, as well as membership composition, if we can get a little bit of a jumpstart on that as well, I think that might be helpful.
And how soon would we need to start to incorporate this into or align it with the next, with the election?
The presidential. Yeah. So again, I think if we, you know, really get this underway next, you know, next fall timeframe, that would give us about a year to complete the work. You know, typically, as Sean said, charter revision, depending on the extent, you know, you're looking at twelve to eighteen, eighteen months, depending on the timeframe. So, you know, again, probably really having a plan in place. And that's something that Bob and I are also going to be reviewing, is providing a sample timeline to folks in terms of, you know, do we want to get a head start on this next summer versus the fall? But I would say probably no later than, you know, the fall of next, next year, we would want to make sure that the effort is underway.
Really depends on us. If we get together and have an idea of what we want to talk about for scope in the summer, so that we're ready to go in the fall, if we not have an idea, because the interviews, we interviewed, God, I want to say a dozen people, Chris Kelly and I did. And, I mean, that was a month-plus process on top of the town committees. So anything that we want to do to expedite it, if we desire to hit that presidential, we don't have to, but it's a, it's a nice time to try to hit.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments on that, is that this is going to fall right into another election season for all of us. So we don't want to make it a political football. So I think we have to be aware of that, just whether we are doing the scope or people are, we're picking people to be on the boards and commissions. I'm just putting that out there.
Yep.
The other question was, you said we have to consider it by twenty twenty-three? And I want to clarify this. If we can, do we, can we also consider and say, we're not going to do it? That was a point you had made, I think, right?
Yeah. So some communities will often do that. Again, opening up a charter is, as I mentioned, a very significant, you know, time, time investment, as well as other, you know, financial resources. And so many communities that are very oftentimes like comfortable, you know, with how their government is functioning, perhaps also more longstanding, you know, forms of government are in place, maybe less tweaks are needed, things of that nature. They'll simply consider it, but then not, you know, move forward with actually engaging in a charter revision.
And have we done that in the past?
I don't know, Sean. Do you know?
Not my time. Not my time. We have not.
So we've always engaged in it, what?
We actually convened it early last time.
And the, do you remember the cost? What's the general cost?
You know, that predated me, so I'm not sure what it cost us last time.
I feel like, I don't know, I'm, I might be making this up, but I want to say between fifty and a hundred K.
Oh, so we, okay. I thought you were talking about some, you know.
Yeah, gazillion dollars.
Um, no, and Bob, Bob D. knows our charter backwards and forwards. So, I mean, again, it's, there's also benefit to doing it while he's here, et cetera.
So do we ever? So do we ever, I guess, do we? Or not, maybe we haven't, so that question can't be answered. But is there, can anyone ever envision a situation where the legal is done, I think, reactive, correct? In the sense that ideas are brought forth and then it's reactive and it's interpreted as to what can and can't be done. But have we ever actually brought in, dare I say the word consultant, has anyone ever looked at our charter and benchmarked it as a policy expert, it's benchmarked it against similar peer towns, whichever, to say, you know, this is where you're, so far be it from, so then you have that as a third party, just like we do a master plan, just like we did Parkson Rec, just like we do buildings and everything else. Because a lot of this, because a lot, what's going to happen is a lot of this, especially, so people are going to point fingers at, certainly that's a political issue, that's an emotional issue, that's whatever, whatever, whatever. And I've got no, I've got no problems fighting whoever points a finger at me for whatever issue I bring up. But to save, to save all you guys.
Or there can be ways of doing things that we didn't think of that are just better.
It's 100% correct.
Yes.
Because yes, so Bob's an expert as it relates to our charter, but he may not be an expert as it relates to how charters, other charters in other towns live harmoniously.
Before you answer, because I think I know what you're going to say, but remember, 169 towns have 169 different charters. So, you know, we are special, just like everyone else.
CCM does have a toolkit that I sent to everybody.
Wendy, I appreciate that. I started looking through it and going, oh my gosh, maybe I don't want to do this.
I do think, I do think we should learn from other communities, right? But at the end of the day, it is, it is what the citizens want us to address. And while we do define the initial scope, the interviews, it is very much driven by the folks that come in and testify before the Charter Commission. And then ultimately, the members that we select come back with recommendations. So I would hope that, and I love the suggestion, if we could, if we want to pay for a consultant in addition to Bob, we certainly can, right? But that's, that's an additional cost that we would need to figure out, you know, again, how valuable is that, right? And.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great suggestion. And we can certainly look at that as part of the potential budgeted expenses. And I do think feedback from our town attorney, and I do know that Bob has served as counsel for other communities on charter revisions as well. So he has, you know, worked with some and seen some throughout the state.
Yeah.
Again, I think our labor attorney could, could be helpful. We do have some provisions related to personnel, which are somewhat unusual, particularly for a manager form of government. And again, our labor attorney works in a lot of communities through Connecticut. So I think he would be able to probably provide a good perspective on that. But also, our bond counsel has, you know, in the past, shared with us. And again, she does work all over the state and has been since the mid-1980s, very knowledgeable. And some of our budgetary and financial management aspects of our charter, she has told us that she has not seen that level of duplication in any charter anywhere else in this.
Yep, we're going down the road I'm going.
So those are just examples of some folks who have some statewide perspective, but they also work very closely with us. So I definitely think, you know, we could ask them to assist as well, maybe in some observations or, you know, suggestions that they might have for us to take a look at.
Okay. So, so as of tonight, this is just for conversation, I think everybody should start their little charter revision wishlist notebook as we go forward. And we'll let Maria and start greasing the wheels.
Yeah, no, I.
See where we have to go with that.
I agree with that. And that's, that's what I'd hope to accomplish tonight. The only thing that I would push for is when we go through the budgetary process, if we ultimately decide to fund it, I would strongly suggest we start earlier than, than the fall of next year. We are always running for election, and that is one of the challenges, that we have a two-year term, you know, and it seems like we're always running for something. So.
Can we change the charter before?
We have asked for it to be considered, and it was rejected in the past. So, you know, again, but anything is open for, for a response. So, but I would encourage us to start earlier rather than later, once we decide whether we want to fund it or not, because it's, it is, for all the reasons that we've talked about tonight, it is a complicated, really important process that takes longer than everybody thinks. So.
Would you if I may?
Sure.
Sorry.
I, I wanted to express an interest in moving forward with this. I would say echo latest next fall.
I have, you know, I've, many of you know, I've had an interest in moving forward with charter revision. And I think if this could be teed up for a presidential year, that would be appropriate. But I think, you know, even the process of defining scope and putting a charter revision together could be quite time-consuming. So I'd be very much in favor of putting some budgetary estimates together for the upcoming fiscal year. So I appreciate you putting this on the agenda tonight, Sean.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
And if it was something that was decided to get started on before the next budgetary, I don't know if that's something that's in consideration.
I think it's possible.
We do, we would just get a supplement, get an estimate and then.
I mean, we can ask for a supplemental, I think, I mean, honestly, I think to Wendy's point earlier, I'm not sure we have the bandwidth, staff or organization, to start it in the earlier. Well, I mean, we can't, we can do it anytime we want.
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to say, go to the, you know, make a supplemental appropriation for $100,000 in the middle of it.
Thank you. If we do, it's going to mean, you know, juggling priorities. It means we will do this, and there will be some other things that we have to put off. So it's a matter of this board figuring out what the right priority is.
Right.
And I do think, again, depending on the timeline, as Bob and Melissa and I kind of worked through some samples and some options for you, there is some sort of pre-planning work that we could do that wouldn't necessarily have a cost. So, you know, for example, thinking about membership composition and then doing interviews or thinking about scope items, those are, you know, probably certainly things that if we needed to jump it up a little early, earlier than summer, again, those are things that we could work on. But to Eric's point, right, that it's also shifting priorities and projects and things of, things of that nature.
I think like what you mentioned, and you talked about originally, is a proposed, just a timeline idea, just to, we could get an idea of where we could come into, into the whole, the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So now we get to our, we can remember back to January 11th, I think it was the date, the Board of Selectmen goals that we discussed. And we've, we're going to bring that up on the screen, is everybody going to look at it on their laptops? I'm not sure what the format is here.
And just which version? Do folks have a strong preference on version that they prefer to look at? I did send out a chart this morning, as we've done in the past, sort of sorted the data by a couple of different areas. And then I know also Wendy spent a lot of time and put together a nice summary as well. So I'm not sure, again, we do have all the different versions teed up and ready to go. And I apologize for just not consulting with you all sooner to see where you might like to start in terms of just a version.
It depends. I don't know what people have looked at, or if people have had time to review the, the goals. So whatever people are more comfortable with. I, I have my own, so I know what I can look at. And I think you made some suggestions that we, we should talk about, or is that, you know, whether we look at points or consensus, I'm leaning towards consensus, because someone could put 100 points on one item and it's going to be the top item for the whole board, even if they don't care about it. And that, that was kind of how I grouped mine. But I.
Nobody did that, though. So, I mean, we have the numbers.
Yeah. And maybe it would be helpful to, I did have a few observations as we went through and sorted the data. So maybe just a couple of high-level points to help begin the conversation. You know, as we've done in the past, we have sort of our topic areas or focus areas. And there were from a sort of overall points in terms of board members and the assignment overall points. And the chart that we pulled up on the screen shows this. The top three areas were financial management, public health and wellbeing, and parks and recreation. And then after that, you know, the point values start to taper off. So in terms of, if you really want to focus more on sort of broad goal area, excuse me, broad focus areas, those were your top three. We also took a look at the point values of each of the more specific goals. And there were six that came out essentially on, on top. They were your sort of top, top five. It's just that the last three of those six had the same point values assigned to them. And then again, you start to see the point values started to taper off a bit. But we did identify the top six goals, and they were all related to financial management, public health and wellbeing, and parks and recreation, with the individual goals being engaging in long-range planning of capital between the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Board of Ed, incorporating the Town's Facilities Master Plan results. This actually was also a consensus area where we had five Board of Selectmen members who all assigned some point value to that. Another goal that received top points overall from, from the entire committee was supporting the work of the Town's DEI Council and DEI initiatives, continuing to work on our, our DEI vision for the community and the organization. That was a goal that had received three Board of Selectmen who assigned points to that. Exploring shared services between the Town of Simsbury and Simsbury Board of Education was also something that three board members had assigned points to. Supporting work of the Polinator Pathway Initiative, investing in our athletic fields and facilities, as well as providing mental health services and resources to the community. So in terms of from a pure points perspective, that's where there was sort of the greatest consensus. And then we also sorted the data for you, and you can see it up on screen as well, but there is a separate tab, just to see which of the more specific goals had some commonalities between the board members. And this was a little different this time around, in that there wasn't as much consensus around those more specific goals as we've ordinarily seen in the past. So as I mentioned, that particular financial management goal, there were five board members. After that, there were five specific goals that three board members assigned points to. After that, it's only one or two board members assigning points. So again, just in terms of thinking about some areas that might have a lot of consensus, I did my best just to try to summarize and flag those opportunities for you.
Can I, can I ask a favor? Do you have my, my thing there? I just want to, if anybody, because I gave this a lot of thought, so I was just going to ask if I can talk about it here, if that's okay with the board.
Of course. I mean, it's your meeting, but I have a question. There's a bunch of goals that got added that none of us, none of us saw.
So can I, that's what I was going to comment on.
I don't know how we added goals when we were supposed to rank it. So that's confusing to me.
So first of all, I'm going to comment on that. I think I said, if you want to add goals, you can add goals because the.
But how do you rank them?
So wait, so we were going to, well, the plan was to discuss this as a board and to go through the goals and then prioritize and maybe get people to shift over to your goal, if you reworded it differently, or you added some goals that comment, that was how I looked at it, that it would be a working session to reach consensus on the goals, that people have maybe altered or added, because it's been since January and we have all have experience in office. So that's my first take. I'm going to just say what I did, which is what Maria had one of the spreadsheets, was I went through, I got rid of all the goals where nobody had picked them. I also had made the error on my point, I went down very low to my medium and low. So I jumped up, anything that I had is like very small. And I just took my higher level goals and included them with everybody else's, because nobody went to the level of detail that I did. And then what I did here, which is really what Maria just pointed out too, was I took the goals and I ranked them by how many people put that as a goal. So that the top goal of five members of the board was to engage in long-range planning of the capital between the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and Board of Ed. So to me, that, that was the top goal of all of us. One point on that, that I think, I think Heather saw my, asked for my goals, and so I shared them with her.
You shared them with all of us.
Oh, I did share them.
And that's when you said to make whatever, so then.
Yeah, I did.
To, anyone to add on. So that's when I thought, well, we have a new goal thing. So then I worked off yours a little as well.
Okay.
In addition to the original. Well, all of the original was on hers.
Yeah.
It was the whole original plus some rewording.
Is there a question?
No.
Okay.
Private conversation.
Okay. So then we wanted to incorporate the Town's Facilities Master Plan results. I broke those out into a separate item because we had a lot of investment in infrastructure, master plans for parks and rec, master plans for, for the town. So, so I'm just going to say, the, the top goal that I saw here, and if you look at, there was a lot of points allotted from people, is the long-range planning. Everybody else voted to explore for people with the shared services between the Town of Simsbury and the Board of Ed. That had a lot of points there. So one question that I have on that is, what, at a detail level, what does that mean to us? And that would be something I would want to see itemized under that. If we just say, explore shared services, I had told Maria, I thought we were done with that because we had merged the finance, finance departments. But what Maria said, there's a lot more behind the scenes to that. I don't know what those items are, I don't think. So it'd be good to maybe blow those out.
A lot more observations that you found that's a lot more to be done potentially around shared services, or a lot more still to be done to the ones that have already been shared?
A little bit of both.
Okay.
So like I said, I only knew about, we're merging, maybe I knew more about that, but that we were going to combine the finance department, and we, we did that, we've already done that. So if we, if we explore the shared services, I think I personally would like to maybe see, or maybe it would be in Maria's goals, what are we doing under that category to, to move the shared services? The other item that was a top goal is the support of the DEI's work. Now, when we met in January, we took out the DEI Council reference because we said as a, as a town, we want to support and develop DEI initiatives across all boards and commissions. So I modified my goal to reflect that.
I don't think we agreed on that. I think that Eric and I argued against that being taken out.
Okay, then that would be something we should discuss, because, right?
I recall it being, I thought it was agreed upon in the end that it was not that specific group, because, you know, what if aging and disability came, or another group that is diverse and it came, then why is one being prioritized over the other without knowing what they're coming with?
I mean, the whole point of the diversity in Equity Council is diversity and inclusion. So I think we thought, again, Eric, keep me honest here, but I thought we were going to keep the reference there, but not limit it to only there. But maybe I'm misremembering that.
Mike? So I apologize, it's a little hard for me to hear, but my recollection was that we broadened the goal from DEI Council to sort of DEI initiatives, sort of regardless of where they come from.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Right. And so that was why I rewrote it. I mean, nobody else rewrote it.
It was so long ago, I can't.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's what I'm.
We had a debate about it. Okay.
And then the, the executive coaching and 360 feedback opportunities, that had a large mass. It wasn't a lot of points, but there was a lot of consensus there. The other, the other one that had multiple was three people selected, invest in our athletic fields and facilities. That, I'd be interested to know, and that's, are those things in the Parks and Rec master plan that we're talking about? Are they outside of the Parks and Rec master plan? So Parks and Rec master plan items?
So I'm confused. Are you challenging our selections or making suggestions on how?
I'm trying to work with the suggestions that, see if we can round them out and make them more robust.
All right. Well, we just ripped through five of them. So are we going to take them one at a time? Or do you want us to answer along the way? I'm confused.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm just trying to have a conversation on what our goals are. If, if everybody thinks they stand as written from that day and don't want to discuss any modifications or changes in their priorities, then we can go that route.
I'm not suggesting we not, but again, do you want us to comment on the other five that you read? Or, again, I'm confused on what you're looking for specifically, because I think we have a lot of, we have increased in, in, in kids in this town, in sports, particularly in, in girls' sports.
Okay.
So, so again, I'm with Sean. What's the, I mean.
My question, yeah.
Don't disagree. I don't, I'm not saying, I'm not stating that what you're moving through here has no value. I'm just asking for clarity, because if you do go one by one, so the specific to, to invest in our athletic field, that's something, it's, you know, something that I pushed forward, I'm pushing, I would like to push forward. But to your question, it's also something that's identified in the Parks and Rec.
And that's great. And that's, so that's what I'm, that's the question is, are we saying, invest in our athletic fields so that in the, in the, so basically what I'm hearing is, there, it's in the Parks and Rec master plan, but we want to push forward potentially in our budget next year, items that invest, that take care of the athletic fields and facilities, as a priority over, say, the painting the golf shed or something?
So yes, so what we have, this is my interpretation, and I hate to always say, go back to Sean, but, because Mike's not here anymore, so, you know, he's.
We've already proved my memory's never again.
But the, but we have, we have master plans, right? And I don't think that we necessarily, as a board, sync with our master plans when we do our planning, specifically the budget.
Okay.
So, so I would hate to, this is just as an example, okay? We just, this is an example. I'd, I'd hate for us to go, it'd be 2020, it'd be 2030, and the next Parks and Rec master plan is, is done, and it is just, it just revisits all the ones from 2020, because we never did anything. So to me, this is, I'm saying, I guess I'm not saying anything other than the fact that we, I would like to use some of the things that we've paid for to push forward as agenda items that are priorities for us, because they're not necessarily, we lose sight of what professionals are telling us to make priorities for this town sometimes. Is that clear?
How often do we review in the past these facility plans to make sure we're sort of staying on point and following them? I mean, is there something kind of tied into it where?
I've not had them.
We had, you know, we kind of revisit. We had, you know, we kind of revisit then get our head around, well, this is.
We haven't had the plans. This is the first time we've had them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so both the.
Oh, I understand.
And the Parks and Open Space Master Plan were new endeavors for us.
Oh, okay.
And to Chris's point where, you know, the prioritization has been helpful, particularly as we're going into budget development, as myself and staff are preparing recommendations for you. It's been in the past and it seems that it's going to continue to be the case where there has been a strong commitment and a consensus from this board around investment in our parks and recreation infrastructure. And I think a nice anecdote that I can share is our park superintendent, who has been here for over 30 years, so that he has been able to do more in improving our parks infrastructure in the last three to four years than he did in his prior probably career here combined. And again, that comes back to you all, I think, made that very clear, that that was a priority, that was important to you, you know, be prepared on the staff end, that the legwork to provide recommendations to you. But at the end of the day, that was a policy decision for you all, that you made that a priority during budget and provided us, along with our voters, the resources to move forward with implementation of that vision that you had. So I think that's perhaps an example of, you know, how we've, how we've worked with this in the past. You know, one thought just from a process standpoint moving forward. I mean, we do have with the, with the individual goals that were added, it's about 55 different line items, some with points, some without points. You know, we did try and the spreadsheet we sent this morning, highlight for you and sort of flag some of those new additions for consideration. You know, maybe a good next step would be to, for me to recirculate this, perhaps take off all of the goals that had no points assigned to them that might help clean it up and sort of say, okay, of the remaining goals, including those new goals, do folks want to reprioritize their points, keep them as is? And again, just meaning in terms of feedback for the August meeting, you know, when you're looking at points by topic, points by goal, points by number of members, I think if we can continue to sort that data that way, because I think that might vary a little bit by person. But again, at the end of the day, we're really just looking for consensus around, you know, a key number of items that are really important to you. And I think we'll get there, it just sometimes takes a little bit.
We have, I mean, the, the top ones stand out, obviously. And then we have a lot where two people pick voted, you know, I have to say voted, but selected those and, you know, the various point structure. And then we have like a whole bunch of one offs, right? Where only one person put them or one person put, you know, a lot to that one. So I, I would like to see those top goals, right? That we, that I think you highlighted them too, that had the most consensus. And then maybe go down into the ones where there's less consensus. Do we, do we want to do points or do we want to do? I, I, I look at it as more high, medium and low. And then we can rank, which is kind of how you do your goals. But I, you guys are used to doing the point system, so I'll stick with the point system if that works.
If we do high, medium, low and no, I'm fine with that. Because I don't think, I think there's too many goals, goals on here.
Yeah.
To, to, I mean, there, there would end up being 40, I think 40 goals if we include everything.
I had 65.
Yeah, that's way, that's way too many goals.
Of what I found, or actually 60, 65, but that includes double people who ranked them. Sorry, I didn't.
Can I ask a process question? So like, this is an exercise that, since I'm new to the board, I'm gonna, I'm just making sure I understand. We would, we would do this every year, right? So will, we, will we?
So the incoming board for its cycle essentially.
Okay, so it doesn't, so next Jan, so this is for through, we won't revisit these goals again in January. They'll inform through the rest of our term, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
And where we've had sometimes sort of more topical sorts of issues pop up in the in-between period, we would typically address that through some sort of organizational goal related to the goals that you established for me in the subsequent out year. So that's been sort of a way that we've been able to accommodate some of those more topical things that popped up, sort of like the Meadowhead opportunity. That was a good example of heading into the previous term. We weren't prepared for that, didn't know of the opportunity. It was something that happened very early on and we were able to sort of shift and adjust, adjust and accommodate.
I mean, I would, my, I guess, opinion would be, it would be nice to take some of these that people at least voted for, that we seem to start to have some coalescence around and have the opportunity to revote using like the high, medium, low, no, just to, because I feel like as we've all gotten more experience and the year has gone on, it would be, I wouldn't mind.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was shooting for.
I just was saying, I agree with.
Yeah, and I, and we already have like a lot of the top ones, right? So, yeah, and like, right, we've all gotten experience and we know what we've heard from different people.
I don't want to, but let's get moving to.
Yeah. Well, we waited till now though to be presented with it, so it's already August.
Let's get moving.
So, yeah.
Yep. So I would agree with that, I think, because we've had a little more, more time. And also because there were so many additions.
Yeah.
You know, I like the idea of kind of just doing a, one more revisit. I get, we want to get moving as well and kind of know what, what the prioritizations are, but.
I agree.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
Definitely. So we could definitely turn this around to you very quickly and just plan to try to discuss and finalize at your, at your next meeting.
And will you define out how, like, are we doing high, medium, low points so that we're all on the same page for the, of, you know, no more additions, sort of rewording?
The book is closed.
Okay.
Because I think we got to get 65 down to 10, 15, 20 max.
That was my mistake.
But.
Yeah, what is, you know, what is an ideal number that we usually?
Yeah, I think something probably more in the range of, you know, Sean shared, you know, 10 to 15, maybe 20, depending again on the nature, because it'll cover again, it's sort of a two-year span. So probably, you know, a quarter to maybe a third of where we're at. And then are folks leaning towards shifting away from points? And would you prefer to sort of rank them low, medium, high? Or just no, like meaning eliminate it altogether? Would you prefer to shift to that as opposed to reusing your points?
Could we just pick our top 10?
I like high, medium and low because I hate the points. And, and if I don't want to vote for it at all, I wouldn't vote for it because some I felt like we had already done, so I didn't even include them.
Yeah, but it's not about what each individual wants 100%. It's a consensus of the six of us. So not everybody's going to get what they want.
I, right.
So that's okay.
No, I know, I get that.
Okay.
The intent of the points is a quick and dirty way to see what's important to people. And to quickly see, as we saw, a lot of things just will fall off for this.
Yeah.
I feel like the high, the, oh, works once you've already determined what are our goals. Even if you have plenty of goals, they're not all going to be high. So I think that then gives you, Maria, an idea of, you know, what's important to us. So, I mean, I feel like we've done the point. So we could, you know, wipe out everything that didn't get any points and then high, medium, low, those as an option.
Can we make a rule that no point denomination below five or below 10 so that it forces you to use up your points?
You can't give 65.
The threes and fours on there were throwing me off.
Though I had already taken those out in my document, but they did not.
I wasn't getting any of you.
Yeah, I took those out.
Some people use 25 and there's some people use twos and threes.
But that's another question that I had is if I put 100, some people use 25 on four calls, but, but there's no.
You had a one on here.
But if there's, but that's because they were incorrectly used. Thank you. That was, but you put 25 on and that you're the only one, say, selecting that. Is that a Board of Selectmen goal just because your points were high? If there's no consensus, that's a philosophical question I would like answered. Because I could put 100 on one that nobody likes.
Yeah, I, I'm in support of Wendy's, I'm in support of the idea of the high, medium, low.
When we answer that question, it's a, it's a tool called nominal group technique. And it's not meant to be that we're robots and that we're going to do whatever the outcome is. It's just to give us a quick way of saying, this is the feeling of the group. And then from there, we can use our collective judgment to say, look, Eric's the only one who put 100 on this really stupid thing. We're not going to do that.
We're not doing any of your goals because you put too many points on them. Okay, so we're going to summarize the goals that we know that people really want. Those are going to be highs, let's put it that way. And then the rest, we're going to reevaluate as our high, medium and low.
And as, and I am just going to restate this because I'm just going to clearly sound like you guys know exactly what direction I'm going in. But Maria, for future boards, I would, I would, as you, when you begin this process or you reintroduce this process of each board incoming, if there are plans out there, they should be looking at, they should be setting their goals in conjunction with an awareness of what stated plans are in existence.
Yep.
Okay, by outside. So we don't get 100 things that are personal when we have paid for identified needs that should be our guidepost. Okay, that's all.
You said, even, I didn't understand that.
It means we should read the master plans before.
Very, very.
Like when we have those goal preparation sessions.
Athletic fields or something that is shown to be, we are told we should be investing in them.
It's in like three of the plans.
Okay?
Okay.
So don't, we should, so those, those are the kinds of things that we should be supporting in our, in our goals and not putting goals that are completely tangential. We should look to the ones that have already been identified as ones you should help frame your goals.
But there's also goals that are not tangible, they're not, they're, they're.
They're idea based, they're conceptual.
Yeah. Those kind of things you can't.
Put them in conjunction.
Public health.
Put the info both.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, when we enter the process, make sure that each member is aware of existing recommended needs. And then you also meet, and you put in your conceptual ones as well.
Yes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That is a great point. And I think I referred to it, you know, back in, in the original cover memos as those master planning documents are really guiding principles for your goal setting, for our budget development. Those are such important documents that we just didn't have until a few years ago. But to your point, right, those really are guiding principles in so much of the work that I think we're all.
So we should have read them before, I should have read them before.
We only had one, we only had one.
Didn't we have the facilities master plan?
Not, not, not completed yet.
Not completed in January, it was close. And our bike pad master plan, this is another example of a guiding document.
Not at all. No, it's not criticism of anybody.
Okay, I just didn't know if we, I missed reading the, okay. So anyway, so let's.
High, medium, low, no, right?
Got it. Okay, so no more points?
Sorry, Eric, we vetoed your numbers. We already tried the numbers, now we're on it.
And we're going to take off anything. I'm going to give you my low ones, my ones, twos, threes and fours. And I moved those points into my top priorities, so.
I, I was working off of the individual tabs in your spreadsheet.
Yeah, that one didn't have it, I did it on the sub.
Can I work off the same sheet of music, please, and not change the music halfway through the course?
Well, we don't, we didn't have any sheet of music until this morning.
We did, we voted, but then.
No, we had sheets of paper.
We could talk about it offline, but we all got an email with the thing we were supposed to rank and then.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I got to.
And then two people changed what we were ranking. We should all be ranking off the same document in the future.
I changed it because I had different ideas.
I'm not saying it's.
I tried to make some clarifications.
We should do it at the board level.
She sent it to the whole board.
I didn't go off that, I went off the one the town manager sent.
Okay, I looked at it as this is the updated one to go off of.
Yeah, so anyway.
Because we're not supposed to communicate through email.
You could have called me. I sent it, send, give me a call. Okay, enough with the goals. We're moving on to the proposed town manager's goals, which the reason we wanted to talk about the Board of Selectmen goals first was because at Personnel, we discussed that Maria's goals should be set on our goals, right? And if we don't have our goals, other than some goals that are tangible administrative work of Maria's, we should be guiding her goals. And so that was the, the logic for putting this last.
So we don't have our goals, we can't do Maria's goals, right?
Well, we can, we, we don't have our goals yet. So that's another question, right? I'm trying to get back to.
Sure, and I could provide an overview that I provided to Personnel Subcommittee that just may provide some helpful context. I think now this is the, gosh, I'm sorry, I'm losing track. There may be fifth or, or a sixth time we've now sort of gone through, you know, this important goal setting exercise for me. I typically look at a number of, of documents as sort of, again, guiding, guiding principles for me as I'm preparing this. So again, thinking about things like our master plans, our capital budget that's approved in terms of, of those types of projects. And again, while you haven't formally adopted your goals, you know, obviously I was, I was there and assisting you all with, with your goal setting discussions, saw where, you know, some consensus was starting to emerge. So I always take your goals into account. Sometimes there are trends that emerge, whether it's maybe statutory changes that we have to address and deal with. You know, for example, the pandemic obviously was not something that we expected, but then had to quickly address and adapt to. So also then taking a look at what our organizational needs are, because sometimes there are just organizational needs that aren't necessary flashy or more policy oriented, but it's very important to supporting our day-to-day operations. So I really do try to take into account all of those different factors and really looking at all of our departments and trying to get a really nice breadth and depth of projects that are important to, to myself and as well as to the organization. In past years, the board has always taken an approach that the goals are both achievable, but also aspirational, because it's always a very ambitious list. And I'm proud to say that I think that myself and the team have done a very good job of making really good progress year after year on these goals. But again, if folks are still comfortable with that concept, obviously this is a little ambitious, you know, from a capacity standpoint, but we do have a high performing team and I feel very good about the goals that, that we have included. Some of these goals are very time intensive. So for example, we're going to be negotiating with four of our bargaining groups in the spring. And one in particular, our ASME group, is our largest bargaining group, negotiating contracts, implementing the contracts. That's just something that takes, takes a lot of time. But again, I think, you know, we would do our best to juggle priorities. And then also just a little bit of context, and I've always appreciated this with the board in the past, is that sometimes, based on trends that emerge, sometimes we simply do just have to shift priorities a bit. So for example, this year, the, you know, the retirement of our town engineer led to a complete restructuring of our public works department, which was a huge undertaking for us. That wasn't anticipated, but it was something that, again, from an HR perspective, required a lot of work, as did the classification work we recently did associated with the new positions that were approved. So again, understanding that sometimes that, things that are very urgent that we could not have anticipated, you know, may require some, some attention as well. So again, this is sort of my first, my first effort at trying to cover those subject areas that in the past you, you've asked us and need to cover. And just looking for maybe some general, general feedback.
You start.
Well, I just made a couple notes because I was on Personnel, but you, can I go first? You want to go first?
You're the boss.
But you're, you're sitting next to me if you want to go first.
So just change 22, 23 to 23, 24 from a budget standpoint. Because we already did the 22 budget.
Oh, my gosh, thank you, I didn't see the table before.
You don't get credit for that twice, you already did.
Good catch on the table.
No, no, that's, that's trivial. The more important one, and I would love my, my peers' feedback, working with the Economic Development Commission, conducting visitations and outreach. I know in the past, there's been a lot of coordination with, with Main Street and Sarah in particular in this space. And I wonder if that's an opportunity to just to build that out through Main Street and, and or the Chamber and just make that a little bit broader with the key, the key community stakeholders.
I actually was going to add, and I was waiting to see if we went through our goals, that some of us had the MOU with Main Street conversation as having the roles and responsibilities with Main Street and how they merge in with our Economic Development Commission. And I was going to make that whole thing like a high goal. And I don't know if Heather.
I mean, I'm overall uncomfortable with, I don't really understand how we approve this when we haven't ranked our priorities.
Well, that's the other.
I mean, it just seems like this should be tabled.
So, so.
Part of this is running, I mean, part of this is running.
It's operational, yeah.
I mean, there's the core work and then there's extracurricular. Most of our goals are extracurricular.
I, I would.
Well, I, but there are some on here, such as, you know, how you, how, how you prioritize, a number of them overlap completely with our priorities.
So I don't think Maria's asking for approval tonight, I mean, we did the.
That's what I was asking, I don't know if.
We did the three sixty previously, I mean, we've talked about updating the personnel rules, I mean.
But I was, I was gonna say those actually should be high, the, if, well, we haven't gone through the.
The priority at some point, let's get the, let's get the words first before we change the priorities, I mean, let's bite off one piece at a time.
Or do we wanna wait till we're done next week and make notes? I was gonna, I was thinking we could give some feedback here, but then ultimately, these.
I'm torn with, I think, so, I'm torn with, because Heather's, so there's, so Sean's point is correct, that there's a ton of the stuff that's almost expected operational needs, right?
Do the budget.
Um, but then there's other ones, I'm torn because, Amber's point, excuse me, um, Heather's point, um, if we look at our own goals, explore shared services is something that's incredibly, uh, I think is gonna pass the mustard and be something we all gonna put on there. That's something that has to be done by you, not us, right? So that's almost one of your, your performance, okay? So, I mean, that, I, I, there's some ones that are.
I think they have to be finalized together, like, we can't finalize Maria's goals until ours are finalized, but I think the impetus is on us to get our goals finalized, because Maria has to have hers finalized, because that's partly how her performance is evaluated, and we can't wait until September, October, to have her goals set, because then she's gonna be evaluated on that, and.
Except she's not of being, what I was, we talked about this, the, the performance review that we're starting now, since these goals are only effective in twenty-twenty-two, they're gonna be based on goals that already exist, that we didn't set.
But like, next year, we're gonna evaluate her on her execution on these goals, and we can't wait till the fall to set her goals, and then evaluate her in the summer, and, you know, I, I'm just saying, we need to probably wrap both of these things up at the same time, that's just my thought.
I agree.
I agree, but I guess I, I thought we were just giving her feedback on these two.
I, I think, yeah, yeah, and then.
I'm fine with what everybody wants to do, but.
Well, I mean, wouldn't it be that we would hope to have these on the agenda in August and finalize both of them at that meeting?
Yeah, we can, we can actually look at, huh, yeah, and we can look at these, yeah, in, in conjunction with those, as we do those, even fill them in or something.
All right, I'll call one.
That's what I'll do on my spreadsheet.
If we're doing that, I'll call one for the August meeting then.
Oh, well, we don't need you there.
But that's the, uh, 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 the thirteenth?
Eighth.
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 Unless we have a special, which we brought that up.
No.
Well, you could say no, but it's, this, this is hard to talk about in open session, to really go through.
A special we have to talk about, we, these are not.
Well, open session, but we're sitting in a, yeah, we'll, we'll just have another extended meeting, I'm fine with that, I've, I'm gonna be there, so.
The August meeting is a light meeting, I can already tell, so.
You know, as of right now, it's not a very large agenda, that can change, but.
We had the, potentially, the, yeah, I only know a couple items.
I mean, again, it.
Okay.
Not to minimize this, guys, but again, most of this stuff is baked, I mean, negotiating union contracts, conducting.
I'm saying it's operational expectation.
I mean, we could even pull our goals off here and just say, enact the board of selectmen goals as ranked and prioritized, as one of Maria's goals, I mean, there's a lot of ways to do this, because there's the core running of the government, which Maria is employed to do, and then there's the exer, execution of our goals within a.
Well, is there a way to put these in a spreadsheet that says, a column that shows these are your baked-in goals?
Yeah.
And then we can.
We can do that, I mean, we have traditionally, Eric Rickman from our.
Have you done that before, then?
The first select person has traditionally led the goal collecting, collecting session and.
I just, I, I see that a lot of them are baked in, but there are a lot that are not, I mean, supporting the pollinator pathway is not a baked-in thing.
It's also low.
Yeah, yes, but other things we had on our list are not low.
Right.
On there, are not listed on there and put low, is what I'm saying, I'm saying you kind of, I, I see that there's the baked-in ones, but then there are also things on here that fall under our priorities that we're still figuring out, so, should they be listed as low as well?
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, we can take all of our priorities off this pollinator, that's, that's not running the core government.
Right.
All I'm suggesting is to make everybody comfortable, but I, I, I don't think any of us are gonna debate Maria doing the budget.
No.
And enacting policies and ordinances, right, for public gathering, however everybody wants to do it, but we, we've gotta get this moving.
What sort of change is on here from the last goal?
I would say, and we could, I could recirculate my, my previous goals, and I will be providing you all an update on that at the end of the month. Um, I would say there are, you know, some that are similar, for example, the workaround the budget, right? That's gonna carry over from year to year, um, but a lot of the more project-oriented work, um, especially the special projects list, is very, I'd say, very different, um, from past years. You know, for example, um, you know, going back up to HR and labor relations, um, we have six bargaining groups here in town, which is a very large number, um, and so that is just something that, um, is always going to be ongoing, and the contract years rotate, um, and are staggered, um, and that is just, again, something that we have a legal requirement to perform and to complete. So that's, again, something that's a very important function under Mira, um, and so that always shows up, um, but depending on who we're negotiating with, and how many groups, and the timing, um, that all varies, like, uh, year, year to year, so some of those more specifics get updated, um.
So overall, is this list pretty much last year's list, but the priority, that your priorities, high, medium, low have changed, or are there a lot of additions?
I would say, there, there are definitely a lot of changes, um, and again, something, for example, like high with the collective bargaining, that's a legal requirement, like, we have to get that done, right?
Maria, can I pause you for a second, there, there's a lot of changes, but the staffing study for police services, we just approved that in the budget, cybersecurity audit, we just approved that in the budget. Your five-year EMS plan, that has to be required, so, yeah, there are changes, but these aren't out of left field visionated goals from the board of selectmen either.
That's correct.
These are running the core government, based on budgetary priorities, and again, then there are some pollinator stuff and everything else, that is more of the, the project-oriented stuff, right, that I think you preemptively put on there based on prior, prioritization, right?
Well, e- exactly, for example, you know, you all recently, within the last year, I believe it was within the last year or so, adopted that pollinator initiative policy, um, there's a lot of work that staff then needs to take and, and do with implementation, um, we received some funding to start working on our pollinator, um, our gardens and things of that nature, so, um, right, there's a lot of implementation that still needs to occur at, at a staff level, um, that we're working on and, and coordinating, um, as well as engaging the community group on that.
So that was something that was already in place.
We approved that policy.
The policy and the funding.
Okay.
Yeah, like the public works recreation system that, I had some fun with Mr. Tversky, it's gonna save us all that creative hall of efficiency, right?
So, I'm gonna get nerdy, but I am really excited about that project, um, if, if I could just quickly, sorry, I, cause I know it's a long night, but I'm really proud of the work that Parks and Public Works did together as a team, as opposed to thinking about them as, right, separate functional units, um, they evaluated software options together, um, and it's gonna bring both departments into the twenty-first century, they're gonna have a modern work order system, um, it's also going to have an online, um, an app interface where members of the public can report, um, issues that they see in parks, open space, playgrounds, roadways, um, but they're going to be on the same system, using the same, same system, so, um, I'm, I'm just really.
That'd be good, that'd be great.
I'm really excited about that project.
Two FTEs.
I'm very nerdy about that project, but excited about it.
There's a story behind that.
Okay.
So we're tabling this for the next meeting?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and the only thing that I ask is if we, if you could just highlight the ones that are, like, baked in, I mean, or are they obvious to all of us, I guess, you know what I'm saying, like, the.
Well, again, remember, we approved a lot of this stuff during the budget and otherwise, so.
Okay, so those, those are all baked in.
So if you disagree with it, that's fine, but like, if we don't want Maria to work on the public works order system, we can tell her that, but then we just wasted money two years ago on budget.
Okay, so that would be, I didn't know that, dude, did I vote for that two years ago, I don't know, so if I did, okay, well, I don't remember the budget two years ago.
You guys decided on Parks, people versus police officers, and I got mad.
For Ampera who are new.
Yeah, they don't know either, right?
We also don't know, but if these were all things that were already.
So they were prior decisions.
Baked in, then that's, that's baked in.
Okay.
And, and again, sort of, in terms of, again, thinking about the priorities, prioritization of the high, medium, and low, again, things that are time-sensitive or due to a legal requirement, I tend to prioritize as, as more of a high item, so for example, just looking at the special projects, we need to complete the five-year EMS plan by the end of this calendar year, that's not a nice to have, that is that we must do that, and that is something, um, that my office will be heavily involved in, and, and coordinating. Um, again, you know, Tom spoke earlier to the preservation of the meadow wood, um, parcel and those barns, and time is, is of the essence, um, just based on condition and age, um, so again, a, a lot of the, the items flagged as high come from a very time-sensitive matter or a legal requirement, but not, but not all.
So where do we land?
I, I think we're tabling to the next meeting.
Is that a real runway?
No.
Okay.
So we're tabling till next meeting, does the consensus, but we are going to, we're going to action on the next meeting, right, we're going, and we're gonna have two things, we're, the, we're going to have distilled BOS goals, correct, distilled down, uh, because by then, we will have high, medium, low, noed.
Right, correct.
And.
Subject to our responses, by the way, yes, we have to answer that, we have to provide Maria with the.
That's what I'm saying, we're just still, we're, we're going to come in with distilled down, because we're gonna be responding, that's the one thing, and then the second is, this document is going to be revised, revised and/or re, or some, 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 some sort of, uh, weight given to.
Yeah, maybe. I think if needed, based, I mean, because based on what you were saying, you know, I didn't realize in reading this that certain things on here were approved two years ago, so.
Right.
It's there, um, I, I just don't know, do our priorities that we allocate as high, do they get added to this, or how does that usually work?
Yeah, so again, you know, I was working off of, um, off of the feedback that you all had provided, so I, again, I did my best, that while you don't have a formal adopted, um, you know, set of goals, that I think that, you know, this particular document does really encompass, um, a lot of the goals that there was consensus from the board on, either from a points basis or a number of board members that were interested.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I also would, I, I would agree with Sean's, you know, one, changing that date, but also under the economic development to broaden, you know, broaden that to, to include Main Street and, and Chamber and our visitations and, and outreach as well.
Okay, just, just so I'm, because I'm moving a little slow tonight, what are we going to see differently on August eighth, as it relates to, or either see different, or, or action on August eighth, what's the difference?
For my goals specifically? If I'm hearing, I think that would be helpful for folks, if I can go through and try to do my best to almost flag origin or, or history or nature of the item, you know?
Yeah.
Where you've seen our project.
Right, thank you, yes.
Approved, approved policy of the board of selectmen, um, five-year EMS plan, legal requirement, things of, things of that nature, that maybe if I could provide a little bit of framework, that that might.
But we will be moving in the S, but we were moving from a version that no longer has draft on it, to a finalized one, correct? We are not going to continue to analysis paralysis this at the August eighth meeting for a future meeting.
That would be helpful.
Sold, okay.
I do wanna say one thing, just to clarify, for an example, is that I asked, I talked to Maria about this, so, like, I'm using the pollinator pathway on here, just cause it's a good example, support work related to the pollinator path, pathway, so, Maria explained it to me, that's already work, we funded, we've prioritized that in the budget, we've given money on that, now it's being implemented. So, necess, it does not necessarily have to be on our two-year goals of the board of selectmen, because we've done a nice chunk for this two-year term, and that, it's, it's already being acted on, so I, that's another way to look at some of these things, too.
Very simply put, when you do Maria's review next summer, and you say, did Maria do her job or not, you're gonna use this document to say, did she do the highs, did she do most of the mediums, and did she do an appropriate amount of the lows, in conjunction with what you know about the execution of the role and your expectations as a select person? That's really what it's for.
It's a fair statement.
And if you don't feel like she did her job, or you do feel like you did her job, you're using these goals as the guidance to evaluate her performance, so if she blows off the highs, then we're gonna have a very difficult conversation. If she does the highs and the mediums and a lot of the lows, we'll have a very easy conversation, it's, it's really that simple, we are writing Maria's document for her performance review next year, and it's, it's almost insane that we're asking her to update her own document, but it is what it is.
Do we, during the review process?
The goals.
During the review process, do we provide areas to work on, or is this just the only thing that's?
These are the goals from an executional standpoint, there are also, and you'll get the review process as it's, as it's shown, communication, working with, there are additional pieces, but in terms of the core execution of what we ask the town manager to do, in conjunction with her day-to-day charter responsibilities, if she did a good job, most of these items will have been addressed or deprioritized or reprioritized by us in the next twelve months.
Okay.
That's really all this document is for.
Okay, so let's move on, and, and, um.
I get that right?
How do you want to handle the board of selectmen goals? Do you want me to summarize those and move them forward?
Yeah, I think, I, no, I, I think Tom and I can.
You guys offered last time, but I'm volunteering this time.
Yeah, I think.
If you guys can, can hand, resort, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make that clear here, that I was offering to do that.
Thank you for, thank you for offering to help, Wendy, but I can tell.
Okay, so, let's move on.
As well, we need like everyone's things back, so that we can get everything finalized for August.
Okay, so, okay, shut the door on that now, we're gonna go to the resignations for the Conservation Commission, move retroactive to October twenty-eighth to accept the resignation of James Morrison as a regular member of the Conservation, and move retroactive June ninth to accept the resignation of Grant Gritsmacher as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission.
She moved to the other side, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move retro, um, resignation from the DEI Council, and the reasons that they're resigning are, are attached, and they're gonna be out, they're up for the public to see. Move retroactive to May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, to accept the resignation of Suzanne Viola as a regular member of the Simsbury DEI Council.
That with our thanks.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, I was moving ahead already, any comments on the meeting minutes from June thirteenth, if we can remember them? Beautiful, um, and then there's some communications, I think that's the end of the agenda, let me just make sure that it's true, and I would like to ask for somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye, Eric, you made it through, I hope you're okay.